All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, our proposed budget is $39,907,110. That is a 2.92% budget-to-budget increase. Our property tax levy limit was a little under 3.9%, but the Board has decided to stay under that limit, and our tax levy increase is going to be 3.49%. So, for the sixth year in a row, under the tax levy limit, the proposed budget and tax levy is below the cap, and we are maintaining all of our wonderful programs. So, this is a summary of all the data elements that go into computing our tax levy limit. And you can see that since the 2012-13 school year, our levy limit has been anywhere from 1.5% up to 4.1%. And every year, we have been under the limit. We have not tried to override. And this year, we're actually under the limit by the largest margin, and that is $131,719 under the tax levy limit. We were also able to include some really great things for our students in the proposed budget. And we are continuing our investment in classroom technology, and that includes a class set of Chromebooks for every middle and high school student. It includes funding for a significant increase in IB participation. It provides for additional funds for New York State mandated E&amp;L staffing. We are continuing our investment in our physical education program by purchasing additional cardio and weight room equipment. We're also planning for an additional elementary education, special education section, and that would go hand-in-hand with hiring additional support staff to support that class. We're setting a lot of money aside to replace some of our older equipment. We're also going to be replacing the padding in the middle school gym. $40,000 is set aside for a new theatrical lighting system and separate switching for the gym lights at the elementary school. And we also have a little less than $20,000. $19,500 has been set aside for repair and maintenance projects throughout the district that are listed on our building condition survey. We're hiring two new custodians, which will reduce the need for our substitute custodians. And we're also hiring an additional clerical position to meet the increasing reporting requirements in the area of payroll, human resources, and the Affordable Care Act, which still is not fully repealed. Everyone will be receiving the budget newsletter in the mail in the next few days, and it does provide additional information on the budget. And you can also see our expenditures broken down in four parts. Our largest increase in our expenditures, you'll see, is in transportation. And that $394,741 increase in our transportation line, most of that is for the purchase of our buses that we now have a lease on, and we're going to be paying off our lease on those four buses. We also have a lot of revenue generated on the revenue side that offset most of this increase in transportation expense. The second-largest increase is in the teaching area because we are expanding or actually sustaining and expanding some of our programs. Our proposed budgeted revenues are also increasing. Most of the areas of state aid are staying flat. Payments in lieu of taxes are increasing slightly. All of the other areas of revenue are staying fairly flat. Our general fund tax levy, here's the increase of 3.49%, so that's going up by a little over $1.2 million. And we will be appropriating also from some of our reserves, and we will be appropriating some fund balance. So, the impact of the 3.49% tax levy increase to our taxpayers in the town of Southampton and East Hampton is approximately $178 based on current assessed values for our East Hampton residents and $164.50 for our Southampton residents. And that is assuming that the assessed values stay the same as they currently are today. Our voters are also going to be eligible to receive their property tax rebate, which is part of the laws that New York's legislation approved this year to extend. So, depending on your income, you will receive part of that tax increase back, and that will also be offsetting the increase. For voters that get Basic Star and fall into these categories, their annual tax increase could go down to $95 a year. And for Enhanced Star, that would go down to about $102. We have a lot of information on our website. Right now, we have our budget statement up online, and the budget statement not only provides you with information on the budget, but you'll also see the school academic report cards are there, the district's fiscal accountability summary, the administrative compensation notice is there, and you'll also see the exemption reports for both the town of Southampton and town of East Hampton listed in that statement. Online, you can also find a detailed line-by-line budget. You'll also see a summary of the budget and all the percentage changes, and all of the presentations that we've previously done are also on the website. And then, we also have our custom app, which all of our taxpayers and community members can download, and they can also get all of the budget information at the tip of their fingertips. So, now, we just have to spend a little time on what happens if the budget fails and if the budget doesn't pass on May 16th. So, if the proposed budget passes, the district will enact the budget effective July 1st. But if the proposed budget is defeated, which means that we would receive less than 50% voter approval because we just need a simple majority for the budget to pass, the Board can agree to either resubmit the defeated budget on June 20th, which is the statewide revote date. They could submit a revised budget on June 20th, or they could adopt a contingent budget immediately, which would be enacted on July 1st. The contingent budget would mean reductions of about $1.2 million from our current proposed budget, and you would see that all of the proposed expenditures for equipment, capital projects, and many administrative costs would have to decrease or would have to go away completely. We would not be able to make any of those expenditures under a contingent budget. Facility usage by the public will also be limited in accordance with the law. And if the resubmitted or revised budget is defeated on June 20th, the Board of Education must adopt a contingent budget for July 1st. Under the property tax cap legislation, when a district adopts a contingent budget, the tax levy cannot be increased for any reason, and the tax levy limit is set at 0%. So, there are no exclusions allowed under a contingent budget also. So, as in previous presentations, I've showed you exactly which areas of revenue make up our total proposed budget, and nothing has changed here except for the line "general fund tax levy." And you'll see that for 2016-17, our tax levy was $35,65,000. And if we had to adopt a contingent budget, we would have to keep that levy the same at the $35 million, which would mean drastic cuts in many areas. The administrative cap, which limits the allowable increase in the administrative component of the budget, is also still in effect under the tax cap law, and the administrative component of a contingency budget must not exceed the lesser percent the administrative component comprised in the prior year's budget or in the last defeated budget, which would be the proposed budget for the current year. So, in calculating our administrative cap of the contingency budget, looking at our current proposed year and the prior year, our cap would be 9.552%, which means that under a contingency budget, our administrative portion of the budget could not be more than 9.552%. So, by making reductions to the proposed budget, the proposed budget was $39,907. The contingency budget would have to be $38,683,000, and the administrative percentage based on the three components is 9.46. So, our contingent budget, the way it's calculated right now, taking out expenses for equipment, administrative fees, and capital projects, would meet and be under the administrative cap. There are also two additional propositions on the ballot, and one is to establish a new bus purchase reserve. And I just want everyone to understand that this is not going to mean there's no additional funds that are required from the taxpayers for either proposition if it is approved. So, the first proposition is to establish a new bus purchase reserve. We would be closing out our current bus replacement reserve, taking those funds, transferring it into the new reserve, and any surplus year-end funds, we would also be able to transfer into this reserve, and any future bus purchases could be made with these funds, and we would not have to include those as an increase to the tax levy going forward. Also, expending from our current capital reserve right now that we have, we are trying to get the window project that was originally included in the 2013 bond project. We're trying to get that completed. So, we have one side of the elementary school that still needs to get windows replaced, and we also have all the windows in this facility in Pearson that need to get replaced. And if the voters approve the use of the $1.2 million from the capital reserve, we would be able to go ahead and award that contract before our building permit expires. So, our building permit right now, we have until January 2018 to go ahead and award that contract. If this is not approved, then we would have to go through the whole building permit approval process again, which could take over a year if we ever do have the funds in the future to have the windows done. We have a budget presentation that we're going to be doing tomorrow night at the New York Civic Council, and I believe that's open to everyone to attend. And we also have the budget vote and election on Tuesday, May 16th, which is right around the corner. So, please come out and exercise your right to vote. This is all of the historic budget vote results. You can see that over time, the tax levy increase here since '04-'05, on average, was And under the tax levy limit, you can see how that has been drastically reduced, which was implemented in 1213. And we really have had tremendous voter support in the past few years, so hopefully that will continue. And this is just a big thank you to everyone who worked on the budget and to all of our taxpayers who support the budget each year. Does anyone have any questions? Does anybody in the public have any questions on the budget this time? No? Okay. So, I think we could close this portion of the public hearing then.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. We will move into the educational meeting, which starts with the Policy Committee Report.
Okay. And I have to get... Oh, Jennifer has it. Jennifer's the client.
Oh, I do.
Thank you. Yeah, it's on the desk. It's good. Yes. Good. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. We had policy committee members that were gracious enough to want to come, and I said to them that I thought that my report would be done prior to them being able to step up and have, but if you have any questions that you want me to forward to them. I know that everyone would like to say that their committee is the best committee, but my policy committee works so incredibly hard, I really want to... It's how their excellence and their hard work, because policy work is tedious, it is exacting, it takes doing a tremendous amount of homework because you have to bring the policies home with you, you have to come prepared to every meeting. There is no winging it with a policy committee, and it's important work. It's the most important work some of the Board. Board of Education works on the budget, they hire a superintendent, but most importantly, they set policy, and policy is what guides the ship over a longitudinal period. It's the policy that you go back to when people and personnel shift, and you say, "How is it that we do this?" It becomes the law of the school district. So, very often, people don't understand how important policy is and the regulations that accompany policy. So, you have the policy, and then you have the regulations that go alongside it that are sort of like the different rules and regulations that will support the policy. So, these are very... The work of the policy committee is very important, and...
Katie, did I mention you was on that policy committee, just so we can acknowledge?
You know, I didn't bring... I may need a little... I don't have the list of everybody, and I don't want to leave anybody out, so...
Who's on it on the Board?
Teresa. Yep.
She knows policy.
And Diana, and also Teresa's a wonderful historian. So, she brings a lot of the history to the policy committee, and there was a lot of work to be done because if you see what's happening at the state education level with what they've done with our curriculum, the same thing holds true with the amount of changes that we've seen coming down so rapidly from New York State and from having a governor that's gotten very involved in education and having changes in commissioners. Those kind of changes, we haven't seen. So, that's made a big difference. So, again, it is the laws of the school. The regulations support the laws of the school. What I'll be presenting tonight is the recommendation revisions to the charter, the topics reviewed for the past two years, the topics reviewed this current year that are also being currently reviewed, and the recommended policies to be reviewed in the coming school year. This is what the Board of Education charged us with doing. So, we looked at it, and of course, the Board will be forwarded this, but here is the committee's revisions to the charter. I think this looks pretty familiar, but the committee wants to serve multiple years the membership because you're really just getting started. When you start understanding, what's the difference between a policy? What's the difference between a regulation? What's the difference between a code of conduct or an administrator's manual? Just understanding how all those things interlock and make a difference. So, for example, something that we were schooled on this year is that they're recommending that with social media now, school districts move away from policy and go more to protocol and to administrator's manuals because it's become much more litigious with social media, that because it's the law of the school district, folks will find a loophole, and they'll do it... So, for example, school districts have set policy around their websites, and they have found that they will go after, well, you aren't doing... You know, something hasn't been updated on the website, and they'll hold them to it. So, it's this all-or-nothing thinking, so that we've been very careful about, do we want something to be a policy, be the law of the school district, because you have to be careful that you're upholding that law at all times. So, the committee members, we thought, really should... One of the things we'd like to change in the charter is that they serve multiple years, that we appoint members to be made by the Board of Education, be made in the spring rather than in the summer or the fall, so that if we have new members, we can bring them up to speed quickly.
If you have a question, you want to wait till the end of this?
Sure. No, if you want to jump in, especially with these, the charter recommendations. I know the Board will look these all over the same...
So, is what's highlighted the new recommendation or what you want to change?
Those are what we want to change.
Oh, okay. So, you don't have what you want to make it to?
We only updated our charter in 2014.
I just want to try and mistake.
We updated our charter in 2014, so our charter's pretty good. Yeah, it's in really good shape. So, we're pretty happy with our charter because we only adopted it... Yep. So, we're happy with it. The only thing we found is we meet every three weeks. A lot of the committees meet every month or may miss a month. We don't. So, we just feel... And we really want to work through the summer, so that's my next recommendation, that we serve year-round. And I know there's a lot of enthusiasm about that.
I just looked at Teresa's.
But they do see it. I have to tell you, these are the most thoughtful people because they sometimes will roll their eyes, and I'll be like, "So, I'm sending you home with another packet," and they're like... But they always come prepared. They always come prepared. They have good questions. They understand, you know? And I have to tell you, this is not for everyone at all. Reviewing all the policies every three years was put into the charter. I just think if you look at our policy manual, it is this deep. We are better off... My recommendation to the Board is continuing to use the Erie One Policy Audit Service to review ours because laws do change and recommendations do come down from the commissioner, and our attorneys do make recommendations about policies we should be looking for because Erie One is going to be looking at, what is the commissioner saying? What is the governor saying? What are the laws changing around, you know, anything like transgender is very big right now. It's like, what are we looking at to make those policy changes? But we, as a school district, can't keep up that fast, and so we're better off having a service that's really looking ours over. And since we only meet every three weeks, what we're really looking at is, what do we do it now? What do we have to do right now to stay current?
Katie, can I just jump in and add something?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, please.
I think the Erie One Auditor Review is very helpful, but I think something that we've learned as a committee is that's just the key pieces.
Yes.
Some of our policies are so much more robust than that.
Yeah.
So, I think we don't want to lose that.
Yeah.
So, I think a combination of the two is very important.
Well, one of the things that Erie One doesn't do for us, and I think Teresa can speak this and Diana, is it doesn't speak to our culture. And that's what you find out about policies, is that they are very driven by the culture of your school district. So, the policy manual for Southampton or East Hampton or Wayne Scott is going to look very different than Sag Harbor because we have our own personal culture about how we're going to manage any type of issue or how we're going to guide our ship. And again, that's why policy's so important. And we've had a lot of ones that, like even concussion management probably isn't, but when we look at class rank and class weighting, that's very specific to Sag Harbor because we have like the IB program. So, we wanted to look at that in a different way.
Erie One also, from the recommendations that I saw from them, I was looking at this the other night, our policies have several different parts. They're going to be a policy with eight or nine or 12 different parts, and they'll pick one of the clauses, and they'll make a recommendation based on that clause within the policy. And I think it's really our job to, you know, tailor our policies for Sag Harbor School District.
Absolutely.
And I think you guys are doing it.
And like last year, they were very helpful because we went through every business policy that we had and every business operation policy. So, Erie One gave us a lot of, here's the laws, here's the commissioner regulations, but then Jennifer was able to say, "We have a really small business office. This is what's sustainable for our business office. This is what we can do here." So, and it's important when we have these policy meetings that we bring the players to the table as well. The policy committee membership should be more softly worded because they talk about, like if somebody misses two meetings, that they should get a letter. I'm concerned that... Because when we're addressing a certain policy, if someone has to be away, that we don't lose policy members. So, I didn't know if you guys wanted to speak to that one or not because I think we talked about that, you know, like some of ours, we get called away for work, but if you've missed that set of policies, you can still be back and be part of the policy committee if we wanted to word that more softly. I think that if you're on like the Athletic Committee or if you're at other committees, you have a revolving conversation that plays out over a year, but we'll spend three meetings on a specific... Like, right now, we're doing the wellness policy, and it's been very intense. That's all we're doing right now is the wellness policy. But then, we'll be moving on to another policy and having all hands. What's most important is that everybody's there for the policy we're reviewing.
Plus, you meet more frequently, so there needs to be a little bit more giving tag on it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And they do show up. God bless them. Oh, and Matt's also part of our policy committee. And Jeff and Mike have also been part of our... I think you hit almost every one of our meetings last year, or this year. Additional Board members joining the committee, they'd said that Board members could join, but, you know, could sit in on, like if it's something that resonated with them that we were covering, but I think we have to be very careful that we put into the wording that it makes no more than a quorum. So, the superintendent is always the chairperson of the policy committee, but that, you know, we alert the chairperson to let us know so that if it's something that's important, that we work it out, that the visiting Board member makes sure it's not more than a quorum. Does the Board want to receive... It has in the charter that the Board should receive notification of every policy meeting, probably to alert them, like if it's something that really resonates with them. We have not been doing that until I looked at the charter for this meeting, so I haven't been doing that.
We're not at the point if we know what the agenda is.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's something if you want to continue our doing that, I didn't know that was in there, so I apologize. And the policy meeting minutes are on the website, but they also say should be available in the district office. You know, I think that everybody has access through library, through pretty much every means to be able to... We have the policy manual that's available in the district office, so I don't know if that's too far. So, those are my recommendations. Yep. I don't know if my membership wants any other...
No.
No? Okay. Here's a review. What we did in 2014-15, we recommended that Erie One conduct a full audit of all of our school policies, and it was really nice because they gave us a snapshot, and then they gave us things that they would remove, like because of usually legalities and things that they would keep in, and most of them were based on laws, commissioner regulations, and also best practices. And we still have work to do. We've been through all of the school business, which is about a third of the policy manual, and now, we've gotten into some specific topics that were recommended by the Board of Education. And so, in 2016, we did non-instructional business operation policies, so that's what we spent all last year on. And for this year, we did grade weighting policy, class rank policy, athletic concussion management policy, and right now, we're working on the district wellness policy, and we hope to get to an anaphylactic response and protection-related policy before the end of the year. And that one has come up specifically because we have children that are so at risk, and that's been one that's been directed by our attorneys, that we really should focus on Recommended policies to be reviewed. I want to start with the bottom first. We still are working through the rest of the policy manual, so each of the pieces that we want to try and get through, and that's why we really need like summer where we have like a whole day, all by lunch, so I'm not kidding. And then, other ones that have resonated from the Board is cell phones, screen use, social media. And these may not become policy, but they may become regulation, they may be sent into the administrator's manual. Class-based educational field trips have been brought up because we do have all these field trips that go abroad, and we have a very pointed policy where they cannot miss school, and that one was directed to us by the Board last year to look at extracurricular trips. Sexual harassment policies need to be updated. Code of Conduct policy and handbook review, that has to be reviewed every year, and other recommendations by the Board.
Do we want to have this... It's a recommendation, but not a specific possible. Do you want to have this be a topic when we get together for our reorganization meeting? Because it will give people time to reflect, and it may also be tied into some goals we have.
Well, I think you're going to have a time when you go through all of the... Everybody's, every one of the committees, so that might be for the charters. So, this might be a good time, yeah.
I just... The only problem is that sometimes it just... I mean, every year, it seems like we're committed to getting those committees off the ground early, and then it seems like it's December, and I'm still sitting in the committee meeting going through the charter. So, I would hate to miss that opportunity. So, I'd love for us to be disciplined to say, by this date, we're going to have our A-list of what we're going to focus on and let it not kind of linger. Just a suggestion, but I'd love to see us set a deadline for ourselves.
I also like the point you just made about tying it into the goals. I think that's very important.
Yeah.
So, wellness is a good example. This year, wellness was one of our key goals and sort of have a policy that helps kind of direct and reflect that support.
And because it was part of the Board of Education goal, wellness, I think that's why the committee has worked so hard on it. They have taken such a red pen to it, and they've worked very, very hard, and they've brought in... Ms. Maritas has joined the group, Mr. Bramhoff has joined the group, and, you know, they really, you know, toned it down. It's a clean, clean... I think you're going to be really happy when you see your first read-through on it. And that was all. Was there any other things? Again, I want to congratulate, and I will send you out the names of everyone that's on the committee because they do work so hard, and they do... It's exacting work, but I'm very proud of them.
You know, going forward, because I know that at different times, you know, the various administrators do a great job of presenting something about their committee and what they do. As practice, I'd love to have a slide that has the list of all committee members because...
going to be really happy when you, when you see your first read-through on it. And that was all. Was there any other things? It's, again, I want to congratulate and I will send you out the names of everyone that's in, in, that's on the, on the committee because they do work so hard and they do, it's, it's exacting work, but I'm very proud of them.
You know, going forward, because I know that at different times, you know, the various administrators do a great job of presenting something about their committee and what they do. As practice, I'd love to have a slide that has the list of all committee members because, again, these are volunteers who are leaving their families and, or their, their, you know, barco lounger to come and sit and do work.
That's, this is just a very tedious group, Joe.
This is very tedious.
Very tedious.
So I guess we'd love to, you know, have a, have acknowledgement so that if people are looking at this, they really-
Right, right.
Say thanks.
And I didn't know if you want to speak to the work that they do, our board members, but it is.
It's very tedious.
Yeah.
It is. And the other point that I want to make as far as the membership, I think it would be helpful to have presented at the board meetings because that way everybody can see that all the key stakeholders are involved in this decision-making and it's so important. We have teachers, we have parents, we have community members.
Yeah, and we do, and we, the community members, we have, we have teachers that, we have three teachers that are on the committee, we have parents that are on the committee, and they take the work very seriously. And the conversation is very robust and they will not leave a topic until it has been fully vetted. And there are times that I'm like, wow, you know, they, they gave it, give it their all.
I do find the, the group to be very collaborative though. The ideas bounce around and we come to consensus pretty quickly, which is nice.
Yeah, and they, and they really do think about the good of the children, the good of the district. They, they take each of their respective seats and then they will even be their own, you know, they'll go against their own word, you know, and say, well, wait, is that really going to work because it's Sag Harbor and, you know, and we're so small? And it's, it's really nice work, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm really, and I want to hand this off now to, I think, Ms. Maritas, who is going to be talking about our after-school.
Yeah, real quick and then I'll introduce you.
Okay. Yep.
Good evening, everyone. So, thank you. So we're, we were charged with providing an overview of our middle school after-school offerings and I asked Ms. Maritas to organize it into three distinct sections. One is to provide an overview of what neighboring districts do. And so she contacted neighboring middle schools and she'll speak to that data she collected. The second was to examine what we had in place in addition to the after-school drop-in yard program this current year. And the third is what we have planned to put in place for next year. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, so we're going to go a little out of order of what Mr. Nichols just spoke about. But it's the same three ideas, just we're going to go what we do currently, what our data showed comparatively, and then what we're hoping to do for next year. So this year, we have Homework Club. It meets in the library unless otherwise something else is going on until 3:30. There's an advisor and then one of our TAs stays until then. It's Monday through Thursday. We offer, I believe, a robust amount of clubs considering our population. It's mostly sixth graders that usually attend our clubs just because the seventh and eighth graders are able to do interscholastic sports, which you can see. I apologize that it got cut off. The spring sports are lacrosse, baseball, softball, track. And Mr. Bramoff, am I missing any?
No.
Okay, good. I thought I got it. So then also a big chunk of our students, more than half-
Tennis.
Tennis.
Boys tennis.
Boys tennis. And we are offering intramurals, tennis by Mr. A.B. this year as well. If anyone would like to join, contact him. Okay, and then, sorry, we digress. Then, then the middle school musical. So that happens like end of November, so right after the Thanksgiving break, the students start auditioning for the middle school musical. The middle schoolers are involved behind the scenes as well as acting and that takes up a majority of our student body. So our clubs usually don't meet then because they will have no membership. So that is what happens currently. And so this is our data comparing the districts. So West Hampton Beach collaborates with their HUGS program and administration. So from 2:40, they end around 2:30. So at 2:40 to 5 o'clock, it's tuition-based and that's $250 for the entire year.
And that's middle school?
That's middle school. That's their middle school. I talked to Dr. Locato, their assistant principal.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Are you listing all of the clubs that these schools have?
No, so I'm not doing the clubs portion of it for the comparative.
This is just like a drop-in.
This is, this is the drop-in because of yard.
I just want to confirm that thing.
Yep. So this is, I wanted to compare maybe on distance, see what they had.
Yep.
And then also the tuition stuff just because of all the data I can gather within the amount of time. All right, so then Hampton Bay is partners with Scope. Again, it's tuition, 2:30 to 6:30. Now Southampton and East Hampton, our closest neighbors, do only homework club, 2:45 to 4:15, and then East Hampton's 2:40 to 3:40. And then the springs, Project Most is 3:11 to 6:00, and remember that's a K8 building. Just want to make sure that we understand that, so there's a different type of student body.
So this classroom is the pay-throughway?
Yes.
Oh, so if you've got a first grader, this is-
They're also in Project Most.
Okay, so it's, it's, that's different.
Yes. And remember, East Hampton's in middle school, Southampton intermediate, Hampton Bay's is a strictly middle school and West Hampton Beach is a middle school. I want us to think about the types of schools those are and what they're offering because of what's appropriate for our kids. Of course.
On the previous slide-
Yep.
Where you put Homework Club, I assumed that was a separate homework club. Is that our yard?
No, no, no.
No, okay, yard is separate.
That's yard separate.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought.
A lot, oh yes, I apologize.
Okay, I want to be clear.
I will say that I made it in Google Slides. It didn't translate to PowerPoint appropriately. It's a techno, a technology issue, so we apologize for that. But yes, yard, yard is drop-in. The students go right after school and that's till around 5:30.
Okay, goes still proper.
Yep.
And there's no charge, right?
No. Okay, are there any questions with the comparative?
The, the only question I have is I know that one of the heavy times of use of yard happens to be during the middle school play because sometimes the children, based on their part, or if they're dancing or not dancing or whatever, sometimes they have time to kill in between or right after school till they go. Same thing with sports as well, if they're engaged in interscholastic sports. How do the other schools deal with that? Because that seems to have been one of the anchors of the program is that there's a safe haven for kids to be in the building while they're waiting for another scheduled activity.
I think, so when I talk to them, they have more advisors for Homework Club, so it's not just one person doing Homework Club. And they might have a section in Homework Club that's not just homework. It might be games or we have maker space here, like there's, there's different things that there's going on, not just homework and studying.
My experience as a parent of students who've been involved in the play at the middle level in other districts is that when they're not on task, on stage, they're in that setting, quietly reading or whatever.
Oh, in the auditorium, just sitting and reading. Got it. So if they, if they have a, if they're in interscholastic sports and it doesn't start right after school, what would they do?
They, well, usually it starts pretty soon after school, so you're talking about, you know, 10 or 15 minutes. So what they got to do between after school, say it ends at 2:30 and 2:40, they're gathering their stuff. I mean, you've got children who want to be at school as well. Yeah.
Yeah, they're getting prepared for prep.
I'm just thinking, because I know, for instance, just from personal experience, that we have some seventh and eighth grade teams that are being coached by elementary school teachers. So they're not even available, not even, I don't mean it that way, but they're not available for at least 30, 40 minutes. So you at least have that gap of 30, 40 minutes sometimes. Maybe it was different this year. I know my daughters had, had that experience a couple of years ago, so I know that they use the room as well, so I was wondering how this works.
I will speak to, the homework club attendance goes up during the middle school play as well as, I've heard many a times, Ms. Loopy screaming in the hallway, not screaming in the hallway, but trying to find students in the hallway when they go to yard. So I know that she would like her children in the auditorium and not wandering the hallways. So.
That makes sense.
And then I didn't touch on this, Project Most's tuition is $170 per month for the, for 10 months.
Per month?
Yep.
Wow.
What is Free the Children?
Oh, Free the Children is a club that Ms. Anapoli, our middle school guidance counselor, does. It's, works with a nonprofit about raising money for water for children in Africa.
Oh, okay.
All right, so next year, we're hoping to extend Homework Club to 4:30, add more, more advisors and also add a recreational piece to, because we know they're middle school kids, they need to let off steam. They like to move around. So we're hoping to do that. The clubs, we're hoping they will stay the same as well as for student choice. The great part about our school is if kids want to start a new club, they go see Mr. Nichols, they propose it, they find an advisor and hopefully we approve it and we get the enrollment that we want. The middle school musical, of course, keeping that intact. And then obviously the interscholastic sports. This is what we're hoping to do without causing too much of disturbance to our students, but also supporting them in what they need.
Then what happens to HUGS, Ms. Duh?
To what?
Yards. I mean, yard rather than next year.
So I, so I think the answer to that question rests with you in terms of whether or not you want to run an after-school drop-in program or you want the school to structure organized activities. So the proposal before you is one that is not essentially a drop-in program. And even if you delve into Ms. Maritas' comments about Homework Club, even any recreation moving forward will be more structured.
And supervised.
Because the doubt, the dilemma you have in terms of deciding is, the beauty of a drop-in program is that it's unstructured and that it's appealing for some kids to just have a place that they can go and hang. The downside is that it's unstructured because that invites some issues.
So if we have, we don't have an unstructured program because over the years I've heard there have been some positives. There's certain children, certain students that really respond to that and it gives them a safe haven to go. There are some that may be regulars and gives them a safe haven to go, so they're not doing other things that might not be as healthy after school. So I've heard that presented at previous board meetings. So what's the thinking then about making sure that those kids are, is a safety net for them?
I think we, my answer to that would be to encourage those students to participate in the programs that we put forth, to try to actively monitor it.
And then also actively monitor what students want after school that they want to participate in. That's a bigger thing because that changes per year and per grade cohort.
The other, the other question you asked, and I don't have the answer, but it's worth considering is because, because students have, we're making an assumption that having them in the yard room, that is a good thing and in some levels it is, but perhaps having them in the homework club or structured activity would be even better in terms of results that, that come from that.
So am I understanding from your comments that a homework club with a recreational piece or whatever would not be a drop-in type of thing, that they'd have to sign up or register or, or something along those lines?
We'd, we'd make it open like we do with homework.
Yeah, so homework club right now is somewhat drop-in but structured, right? So kids have to sign up and then they sign in, so we know where they are and there's somebody supervising them at all times. I think that there's a handful of students, because one of our goals this year in the middle school was to make sure that we're supporting everybody, especially the ones falling through the cracks. Dragging those children to Homework Club without the drop-in program would be really helpful because then there's nowhere else for them to go but to Homework Club.
Unless they leave the, the school.
Yes, but usually we catch them before that happens.
And if, if the decision is that what we presented is, from the perspective, not sufficient and we want to organize a, a drop-in program, my recommendation is that that drop-in program have more structured activities. And that leads me to believe that contracting out with the outside organization to provide it might be worth considering.
Homework Club meets here in the library?
Yes.
Could Homework Club meet in the cafeteria?
I don't see why not. I think the library was a choice for the Chromebooks, but if we have more advisors, it doesn't mean that they can't be spread out throughout the building, right? So yes, some can meet here, some can meet in the cafeteria, some can meet in the middle school gym if it's not being used by Mr. Bramoff.
Do you think that that could just support different activities or different vibe?
Yeah.
I am, I, you know, if you rename Homework Club to something more appealing and move it out of the library, that might not be a place that a kid wants to go hang out after school. You can put it in the cafeteria and extend the cafeteria out to your recreational part if we're going to be able to exit the building supervised and throw a dodgeball game in there might increase the attendance in the MS club, middle school club, I mean, it's really middle school we're talking about, right? Name it something better and, you know, do our homework, have an alternative, I just-
It's all about branding.
It's all about branding.
Yep.
I was going to say throw in a pool table, you know, something, just make it a little more cooler.
Of course. And be mindful of our advisors that week.
Right, and I, you know, I hate to say it, but those that do attend yard, well, the new yard this year is the MS club are probably going to gravitate naturally and go and maybe find a new friend, a different thing to do, or somebody to help them with their math homework by osmosis, you know?
About how many kids, I know that it would, it would, it varies dramatically based on the season, right? But kind of what's the range of students on average that attend, drop into yard at any given time during the day?
Drop into yard?
Well, I would say, look, I've watched it now since its inception, about 15 years ago. I think there's a core group of kids who spend a lot of time there. And I say a lot, could be there for longer than 40 minutes, an hour. And when I say a core group, that can range anywhere from five to 10.
Okay.
Okay? In addition to that, there are kids that pop in for less than a minute.
Guess so.
And so when you, yeah, so when you hear that there are 60 or 70 participants in a given day, you know, 50 to 60 of those kids are kids who are there for minutes because they're on, on their way to another activity.
Is there, building on what's, I think you're building on what Stephanie said, it seemed like over the years, there were many times where kids would check into yard and they want to go outside and have some kind of recreational activity, hoops or whatever, that they, at the end of a day of doing something academic, they like that idea, but it's not necessarily competitive to be on a team or they're killing time and they just, is, does anything that you've suggested address that? Because it seemed like there were many kids that did that over time.
You mean the recreation component?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Ms. Maritas referenced that in additional staff for next year.
Yep. I think that's extremely important, especially for adolescent.
You mean, if you moved this to, if you moved Homework Club to downstairs, then you could do that.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to rebrand because-
Yeah. And I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think the cafeteria could be sectioned off of those that really need the help to do homework and enable probably not a lot of kids to disrupt them.
And I think we-
Just some added background though with the cafeteria idea. I think it sounds good, but know that we've made a move multiple years to have yard stationed in the cafeteria. Do you remember that?
I do.
And the feedback regarding that move was not good.
But they weren't allowed to go out.
The numbers, the numbers, they were allowed to go outside. The numbers dropped significantly. They like their little, and I understand what we're trying to do here and I understand the need to keep it under a more supervised program. But when the program first started, I too was on the board to start yard and it was for children to have a place to go after the end of the day without being told what they have to do, so they, they could just chill. So you do have the kids who want to go outside and play basketball. So the cafeteria does work for that because they're able to be supervised and go outside, kickball, dodgeball, whatever. But my question is, so Sandy gets done at 2:30 and she's going to go to flag football at 3 o'clock. So is she signing in and then signing back out? Is it going to be the same drop-in, dropout program? How are those going to be handled? Or is it Sandy comes in at 2:30 and she must stay in that place until 4:30 or be picked up by a parent or, because, hold on, let me, let me just finish one more thing, Jeff. Because at the end of the day, when the bell rings at 2:30 something.
30 seconds.
Yep. The door is open. Nobody knows if Sandy's supposed to be at Homework Club or if Sandy's supposed to be at the market. So, I don't understand, so, yeah.
But I'm sorry, help me here. If you sign up for homework.
That's what I'm asking Jeff, he's going to.
But if you sign up now for homework club.
Yeah.
And then you don't appear.
Yeah.
Does somebody call mom and dad?
That's what I'm asking, that's what I just asked him, how structured.
Drop-in basis.
My recommendation is that, and this is, this is me speaking as an administrator.
Which you are.
And concern with responsibility and making sure that everybody's accounted for is, again, if we are going to do a drop-in program, that we hire an outside entity to run it.
Okay.
So then what do you do with the child? And I understand that the, I understand the reason why. But we do have children where there's a gap between the end of the school day and a middle school activity that is, that they sign up for, right?
A big gap. It's huge.
Well, I mean.
It's a lot of kids.
My understudy, which was eighth grade last year, two or three coaches were in the elementary schools.
Three twenty.
Some kids did not start at 2:35 or 2:45. So you had a gap. So you could say, okay, there's kids, we'll just go wander the halls, and go outside for 20 minutes or half an hour, and then we'll get it back in. Or they do, they do this, what we're just describing, for 20 minutes and leave, and they can drop in or not, which is not dissimilar to what they might have done with yard. They'll go by, get some food, you know, get an apple yard or whatever, and then go.
They love that.
I'm just, I'm trying to understand, because unless what we're saying is that all these after-school activities and all sports from middle school will start five or 10 minutes after that bell rings, you do have a period of time where you have 11, 12, 13-year-olds who are half an hour, 40 minutes. And I think it's important to understand what that is, and for them to understand what they're supposed to do then, whether they have just the right to leave the building and come back, or. I mean, there was one, there was a time when they weren't allowed to do that, and they had to go, we were at a board meeting, and they were told they had to go to yard before their practices start.
Yes, and the play.
Yeah, and the play. So whatever we choose to do, I just think it has to be really, it has to accommodate that, and everyone has to know what the expectations are. Does that make sense?
Sit down.
How many sports, Erica, are starting a half hour after school at the middle level?
In the spring, we have to allot them 20 minutes to get to the park. So in the fall, in the fall, we try to start the same thing if they're at the park, 3 o'clock.
And I know that you restructured the winter sports, so it was right after school for the middle school.
Winter sports, and in climate days, we make a real push, whenever possible, to start middle school sports five minutes after the bell rings.
But going to your question, going to your answer then, and I'm not saying, I'm just asking them what's happening currently.
Right, it's just last year.
Past year, it sounds as though the activities are scheduled as soon as they can be, and these sports-wise, related to the end of the day.
So there's no one coaching middle school sports who is an instructor, or an employee in the elementary school, and has to keep an elementary school schedule? Is what you're saying? Because they couldn't then, because they wouldn't be here in time to start the team.
But that doesn't mean that wouldn't change moving forward, Chris.
Yeah, but no, I bet, but then he's.
No, there are, there are coaches that, for example, volleyball, girls volleyball, we do have one, one coach that is in, is in the elementary. But the other coach is stationed here in the high school. So we've always made accommodations to make sure that that practice can start on time.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, can I just go back to the homework club? If I signed, and I've never used it, so I'm sorry, I don't know. If I signed my daughter up for homework club, and she doesn't show up to homework club, someone's calling me and saying, Sophia's not in homework club?
It's a drop-in.
So it's all a drop-in right now?
Yes, but we know when the kids sign out of homework club, and they're staying in the library.
Say that again.
If they don't show up, they don't show up.
If they don't show up, they don't show up. But they sign in, and they sign out, and they don't leave without signing out. They don't leave the actual location.
It's the same as a drop-in, drop-out, just come and go.
I would say that the supervision is probably.
I think it's a little different.
More thorough in homework club than it is in yard.
Right, but, but it, it's, it's a, if someone comes to homework club and leaves 10 minutes earlier, they're, I mean, let's face.
Somebody was supervising them the entire time, so they had eyes on that child for those 10 minutes.
While they're running that homework.
Yes.
So to Chris's point, though, if, if, let's say, middle school play practice didn't start for a set of five or six children until 4 o'clock, because they're focusing on the dancers. So could they still go to homework club for the, for that hour, for that interview? So I think that, that's still.
Well, the good question is, will they be required? And I'm not lugging one or the other, but we've had both flavors of this, both sides of this coin in my tenure here. Are they required to fill that time in, in one of these settings? Or can they go do whatever they want, and then just get back in time for when they have to be back?
They can do whatever they want.
There are children that leave and go to Harbor Market or wander the streets, because at 2:37, when the bell rings, they're free to walk out the front door. And unless their parents have said, go here or go there, they go.
Right, but I'm asking, I appreciate that, but I'm saying, based on this, it sounds like a little bit of a shift for next year in some capacity. I'm trying to understand what the recommended, what the recommendation is to be going forward.
I think what we have to put in to consideration is parents, each parenting style is different, and we respect that. So some parents are okay with their child walking down the street, and going to Harbor Market, or going downtown. And when some parents want structure, and want them to stay at homework club, those parents reach out to myself or Miss Annapolyne, and we make sure that that child's there every day when homework club is offered, or wherever they want them to be. And we've done that. We wait after school and make sure that they check in.
So if you rebrand it, make it more appealing, and reach out to parents and say, here's.
Like, if you want us to keep an eye on your kid, let us know, kind of thing.
And they let us know. Because we want to make respect every parent.
Right.
Do we have a student lounge in the building?
No.
We're sitting in it. Okay, so just the language of student lounge versus library, as an example. And I just, in listening to all of this, and this is great work, thank you, I bring, it brings me back to some news articles and coverage that was of the yard program, as well as kids that I've heard from about it, including my own child. And the words that resonated with me that they would say is that it allowed them to blow off steam, it would allow them to decompress, relax. And I agree with Stephanie, sort of having a physical activity component is very helpful. But I just wonder if part of the problem is, you know, I've also heard a lot of feedback about the cafeteria, and I'm not talking about the food for a minute, I'm talking about the physical space.
Yeah, there's no couches, there's no, yeah.
Yeah, that the kids don't like it, they feel like it's really loud.
That's what Jeff was saying.
So I just wonder if there's something we can do about that, as we think about this, that can help support what you're trying to do? Because I really understand your dilemma in terms of what you're responsible, what we're all responsible for, in terms of the safety, whatever. On the other hand, I also, part of me looks at that research, and what the kids say in terms of the need to feel a little more free range, and how that also can inspire more responsible behavior. Sometimes it doesn't, but, you know.
One can help.
So I'd love to see a middle ground, and I feel like doing what you're doing, but rebranding and having a better space of which the kids can be hanging out.
They can chill, chillax.
So sort of a combination. And I just wonder, what can we do about that?
Supervise, but less structured activity.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, I almost would think that, and this is why I love Susan, student lounge is the words I was looking for. The architects currently working on Stella Maris, and how they came in when they first introduced designs as examples, how they take a boring, you know, 20 by 30 room, and turn it into magic of nooks and crannies, would probably be able to give us some ideas of something you can do in a space in the back of that cafeteria, not taking away from lunch space. I've said it before, I find this, this library to be drip-drab, and the color's horrible. I keep telling Jennifer.
I think you've mentioned that before.
I have, you know. I mean, I keep telling her to hunt for that budget for a little reserved paint, you know? And I, that's the perfect way to put it, some kind of cooler thing.
Well, I'd love to see, I'd love to give the cafeteria walls to our art students, and tell them to go to town. Honestly, well, I think we should.
You'll have to take a walk down there, because it's all, every single wall has either got sound panels on it, or windows. There isn't, there isn't any walls, and.
Can they paint the sound panels?
It's windows across the entire.
No, I know the windows on this wall, but the other walls, I'll wait.
Like, as soon as you go through the front door, and East Hampton to the left, it got, you know, a glass enclosed, but you can see through it, but it's, it's cool. It's, you know, roundish couches.
Coffee brewing, or they kind of hang in the house.
It looks like a little coffee club, almost.
So, I, we've heard from a lot of the board members, Tommy John, you want to weigh in? Thoughts?
Well, I like the idea of a student lounge, and I also like it to be a little bit more structured. I was thinking that perhaps when we move over to Stella Maris, some, some space in the school will open up, or perhaps we can dedicate some space in the school for a type of lounge for students.
I thought about that, but then, parents have to be cool that they're leaving.
Like, walking, yeah.
No, no, not at Stella Maris, over here.
Because our.
Over here.
That's a good point.
So, you know, I think we'll have some options then.
Teresa, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I think some sort of combination space, I think, would be very good. Because I think there were excellent points raised here. And, you know, yard does have that homey, comfortable kind of atmosphere that the library doesn't have. So if we could come up with some sort of space that incorporates all these ideas, it'd be great.
So I think what I'm hearing is the will of the board would like you to kind of think about what type of space might be very inviting, and rebranding, and, and moving forward.
If we open up the Starbucks franchise, we would make enough money that we would never have to go over to tax level cap.
Well, the thing is that kids associate the library with having to be really quiet.
Yeah.
You know, they're told, you're laughing too loud, stop talking to that person, kind of be quiet and sit still. And that's the opposite of what I think most kids want to do after being kind of in the pressure of school all day.
Was there other parts of your presentation?
No, that was it. That was it. I think the biggest thing takeaway is also to get, as much as we think we're really cool, and we know, I'd really like to get student input, because we're not cool. So I would like to get student input on this as well. Yes, I'm not cool. I'm all right with admitting it, I tell them every day. But I think student input would be really helpful.
So Jennifer, if there was, if there, I'm hearing in this room that there's a lot of energy, positive energy, around trying to create a physical space that's more conducive to kids wanting to be there. Is there anything in our budget that would allow that next year? Because we're not, you're not.
Right now, we're supporting, we're supporting the program. And, you know, we, we don't charge right now for anyone who participates, and that, that cost is increasing every year. So you have that in the budget already. And then for any additional, you know, if you want to refurbish an area of building, then we would just have to get quotes and see if we have any funds available to do that.
So what's the next step, then? Because I've heard a lot of interesting ideas. What would happen?
I think ask the kids.
I think the next step is to let the administration put their heads together, and see what they come up with, and talk to the kids, and report back.
Yep, all right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is later start time review.
We're back, or I'm back.
Glad to have you.
So as part of our continuing series of presentations, Mr. Malone and I, this evening, are focusing on the athletic program. So to give you a little background of some of the steps we took to investigate, we met with Mr. Bramoff, we asked him to compile some data, which we will be sharing with you. We asked him to compile data that we thought was pertinent to the consideration of a later start time. We asked him to ask some questions of Section 11, which he did. So we tried to do as thorough analysis as we could, given our resources, so that you have an overview of the impact of a later start time on the athletic program, and maybe some of the questions, future questions that you may, or that we may ask. So with that, we're going to start with just the current bell schedule, which is listed on the left-hand side for the middle school, high school, and what that bell schedule would look like, assuming that we don't fundamentally alter the structure of a, of a school day moving to 8 o'clock. So basically, what you're, what you're doing is you're moving 25 minutes forward, periods 1 through 9, in academic support. So the day would start at 8 o'clock, would end at 3:01. That's a contractual piece that's listed in the contract, seven hours and 1 minute. We asked Mr. Bramoff, well, why don't you talk about this, Mr. Malone?
No, that's fine. No problem. So as Jeff was saying, I think, after meeting with Eric, also taking into account some of the questions that have come up, concerns that have come up from members of the Board of Education, faculty, even the community, just taking all that into account, we're looking tonight at sharing information about the current practice start times. And then we can obviously extrapolate how those would need to be adjusted. We also are going to take a look at the participation in shared sports, and we kind of get specific into that. And then lastly, how, due to contests, away contests, how that impacts the day for the high school students, if they would have to leave early, and if so, what would they be missing? So, so starting with the, the practice start times, and we know that the recommended time for practices at the high school level is, is two hours. That's kind of a guideline. So if you begin at 3, you'd end at 5, at the modified level, or the middle school level. Two hours would be definitely the cap. Most middle school practices would be shorter than those two hours. But this slide here just kind of notes the start times currently. And as even came up a few minutes ago, sometimes these times have to be tweaked slightly, based on circumstances such as coaches that may work in, in the elementary building, arriving a little bit later, or, you know, other factors that may impact that. But this kind of gives you a rough guideline. In the fall, the practices begin at 3 for here at Pearson, or also students that share sports at some of our neighboring districts. In the winter, just to kind of take advantage of the fact that it's indoors, and also to, you know, get students home before it's too dark, too cold, we can start those a little bit earlier. And then in the spring, most of the sports start at 3, except for one that's shared, starts later at 4 o'clock.
So you're referring to both middle and high school, right, in half?
Yeah, just as kind of like a general summary.
So, so I just, I would just want to, I'm going to add to that, because I think that, and I appreciate, you guys put a lot of work together. And this is, there's like many chapters of this book. You keep coming back with another chapter you better share, because it's just a complicated issue. But just if someone saw this, I think there might be, there might be misunderstanding that, you know, in the wintertime, when you have all these basketball teams in middle and high school.
Right.
A handful start then, but a handful start later. So there's some teams whose practices almost are consistently from 4 to 6 every night.
Correct.
And there's some, so I just, I think we want to be cautious about leaving the impression that all the athletes in that season are starting at. It's a fraction of them. Another fraction, they don't start till 4 o'clock.
Right, that's a good point.
So I just, I just think it might be good to, to.
With regard, especially to the winter season you're talking about.
Yeah, not so much the fall or the spring.
When we're sharing the gym space.
More winter, but for instance, spring, we've had so much rain, that so many of the softball practices have been indoors.
Have had to be, and later.
And, and half of them have not started at 2:45 or 3. It's 4:30, 5, we've had practices at 6. So it's really, so it's not that the entire athletic student population is all practicing here.
So what you're focusing on here, Matt, is the earliest start time, like, of the athlete?
I think for, for the presentation tonight, we were just really paying mind to.
The earliest ones.
The earliest, not that everybody.
That's what would be impacted if we were to adjust the time. When we present, if we post this online, we can make that clarification. That's a good point. So, you want me to take this one? So this next slide just gives a little bit more in-depth information, and looks specifically at the current start/end times with East Hampton and Southampton. Those are the neighboring towns that work with us to allow our athletes to be a part of some of their teams, because we do not offer those sports here at Pearson, at East Hampton. The current schedule is 3 to 5. And at Southampton, it's, it's the same, except in this current spring season, the lacrosse program begins at 4, at Southampton. And then at the.
Teresa, ask a clarifying question, because we have a lot of kids in lacrosse.
Yes.
Yes.
And so if it doesn't start at 4, and right now, that's the case, and our buses now leave at 3:30.
Currently, correct.
So if we were to move to the 8 o'clock start time, and they would get out at 3:01.
Correct.
They're still getting all their academic support, and they still have time to make the bus and make it to lacrosse.
the bus and make it to lacrosse. So for the lacrosse players, moving the start time later to eight o'clock has absolutely no effect on their sports. Is that, am I clear on that? I just want to make sure I'm understanding it.
Based on, based on current times.
I just want, clarification?
Right.
It's only half.
Okay. So what do the girls?
Girls go to East Hampton and they start at three.
Okay. So they would miss then, under this schedule, some academic support to get to their practice on time.
Right. And that's, that's why we noted the bus schedule.
Currently, no. Oh, you mean they.
Yes, some. So if, if they start at three.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If we had a.
And we were to, and we, we were to get out at 3:01, they would need to leave academic support 15 minutes early.
Correct.
Or 20 minutes early, give them a few minutes to get their stuff to get on time.
Right.
But they would be able to make their sport and there would be no issue.
If they leave academic support at, yeah, yeah.
During, during that time for whatever, you know, okay.
But Eric, how many male, men's lacrosse players do we have from San Harbor going to Southampton?
We have that.
Oh, you have that.
You're going to see that, that's a comment up ahead.
So what we did, again with Mr. Bramoff's help, is we compiled the student participation by season in the shared sports program and then by sport. So that, speaking to Stephanie's question, we'll have that in a slide or two. So in the fall season, 34, winter, 21, spring 55, meaning that in the spring, there are 55 Pearson students that participate in shared sports programs either with East Hampton or Southampton.
And how many students overall do we have in Pearson? Because it's middle and high school, right?
It's about.
Nine hu, oh, sorry.
It's about 510.
Okay, thank you.
The shared sport participation by season, I'll just run through this real quickly. Football in the fall with Southampton, 16. Girls swimming, East Hampton, five. Girls tennis, East Hampton, 13. Winter, boys swimming, five. You can read that. I don't need to go through it, but you see the numbers.
Yep.
And then in the spring, you have the numbers there. So we've got six, speaking about lacrosse, we've got six students who participate in the JV and varsity program, five over at East Hampton modified. Girls in East Hampton, seven. Boys track, modified. That's a big, a big draw. Same thing with girls at the modified level. Any questions about the shared sports numbers? Revisiting the bell schedule, because some of you may have forgotten that, play, pay close attention to the last two areas, those being period nine and academic support, because the information upcoming pertains to students missing some of either academic support or period nine. Mr. Malone?
Sure. So, so what we did was take a look at, at just the fall, the past fall season, fall 2016, looking at the current timeframe for the day, 7:35 to 2:36. There was, there was an impact even with the current times that we have due to the athletic program. So this year in the fall, 22 contests, 22 games required that our students had to leave during academic support at some point. The bus left earlier than the time that academic support ended. There were 11 contests that did require them to leave the period prior, which is ninth period. And, and there were actually seven during this current year that required students to leave even before ninth period or academic support sometime between periods one and eight. Usually it would be period A, period seven. Okay. So what we did was take that, take that data and then apply a 3:01 end time, just to see what, what would the potential impact be if we were to move to a 3:01 end for the day at Pearson? And the, the impact would be that 113 contests would require students to miss some part of academic support. So compare that to the past fall, which was 22. So we just looked at the schedule of when the buses would have to leave and applied those numbers. There would be 31 contests requiring students to leave during the ninth period. And there'd still be that same, same seven contests, which would require our students to leave prior to period nine and academic support.
So two additional points. Those seven contests are like county finals, semifinals, those kinds of events that students leave early in the morning sometimes because it's an all-day affair.
Right.
And then it's worth pointing out that when we say that, for instance, in the top slide, there are 22 contests that require students to leave during academic support. Mr. Malone mentioned it, but I'll reiterate the fact that it could be any time during academic support.
Be private.
So it could be with only five minutes left in the day. It could be 15 minutes left in the day. We have that data. If we need to file down into that further, Mr. Bramoff actually provided that to us.
Question, because this is really helpful. Thank you. How many, I'm trying to get a sense of like what percentage, because it, you know, 22 or 113 is hard to understand out of context. Like, how many contests do we have in that season? So we know, is it going to be one in 10? Is it going to be, you see what I'm saying? And we also have a lot of teams, right? We have, this is middle and high school, all the sports in the fall, male and female. Some we have like both and some we don't. So I'm just trying to think the typical athlete on a team. Is it like, is it two times? It's going to be four times in those three months? Is it, it's, I'm, you see what I'm saying?
So what we could do, we won't have it tonight.
I'm not looking to create more work. I just didn't know if he had.
We could get that. When I say we, it falls on Mr. Bramoff. But we can, what we can do is we can list out the number of contests for a specific sport and the total and the number of contests that would be required to leave early and at what time. So we can do that in a subsequent presentation.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a good point because what's helpful about it is, while the 113 might look like a big number when it's all the teams combined, I think the question is about what's that effect, impact on an individual student? And it might only be four times, right?
Yeah. It might be, my daughter may be left three times, three.
Yeah. And it's might end two more.
But I'm only concerned about the practice start times. In other words, and again, now I sound like.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't talk about the impact of practice start times.
Because they would be late every day.
Well, I.
Well, we just talked about lacrosse.
My, my answer to that is that the way we currently deal with it is students don't get out of school early, so it wouldn't fall under this. It would fall under a separate category, which is they would be late to their practice.
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
If that practice started at three o'clock.
At three o'clock, right.
In the instance where it starts at four, the answer's, the answer's no, they would not be late. The other thing is that practice time, at least for the practices that we house here at Pearson, there's a range. We said, I, I see two hours as a cap.
Right.
Two hours is a cap. I think the range for practices is realistically from an hour and a half to two hours.
Right.
And it could be anywhere in there, just to give you a full picture of what it could be.
And we also commented, the, the three o'clock start time is basically due to the fact that we end at, you know, 2:35.
Correct.
So students need to get prepared and then get to that practice. We control when the Pearson practices begin, so we can adjust those.
But in the, Matt, you know what? That's right. But, but do you think that the neighboring shared sports athletic directors would be willing to accommodate and move their practice start time later if we moved to eight o'clock start? I don't, I don't know. But that would mean if they're not, if East Hampton is not going to a later start and their kids are out, are they, and there's, you know, 19 kids on the team from East Hampton and six from San Harbor, are they going to back their start time practice up to 3:30 to wait for us to get there?
I think that's a decision for each district tonight. And I don't think we really want to, there's a potential downside to start, to starting, the potential, there is a potential downside to going to districts that we currently combine with, saying that, hey, we need you to move your start time a half hour back, because if you can't do it with us, we're going to look for other options. Because if we do that, what do you think's going to happen?
Bye-bye. We don't have any other options. Right. No, I get that. I understand.
Stephanie, I don't think anybody's, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Tommy John.
Sorry. Slow in the lead-in, I guess. Do we, all the students who are in shared sports, they, they're, they have to be academically eligible, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I think that's an important point, you know. I don't mean to exclude sports because I think sports are excellent. I think coaches are some of the best teachers and, you know, it's great to be part of the team. But to play on a sport, you know, to say a student is academically eligible, that certainly would play into academic support. And it's just.
We adopted that policy last year and it's an academic policy for all students to play robotics, everything they have to be academically eligible for.
I want to come back to what you were saying, Stephanie, because I don't think anybody's saying that. What, you know, when you look at some of the other districts that have done this, they, some of them have shortened their day.
Right.
Wilton, as an example, actually only has eight periods. They had an academic support period and they removed it altogether. What I like about the direction that we seem to be heading, if this is going to be able to be workable, is that we would be able to keep that academic support period, which I know is very important to you and very important to many parents and what have you, and, and yet also accommodate this. So in other words, by letting those kids who are going to an approved activity such as a sport leave early so they can make it to their practices on time. And, you know, the lacrosse is just one example. There's no, no difference in the time that the bus would leave. They're fine, the boys, I realize.
Right. But you've, you've got, can you go back to the shared sports program numbers?
Right. You've got other ones that you'd have to, would have to leave academic support a little early sometimes. There's no question about it.
Yeah, just go back to the total. One more. So here's the thing. If I play field hockey in the fall, basketball in the winter, and lacrosse in the spring, then I don't ever go to academic support.
Yeah, no, that's not true. You, you only miss it in one season because in fact, in the fall and the winter, those are our sports. Field hockey and basketball are our sports. They're not shared sports. So the only shared sport you're in is lacrosse, which is in the spring.
But then.
Football would be four.
Yeah. But then are we moving our practices back?
Well, it depends on the sport. It looked like we might not have to, or maybe, you know, five minutes would adjust. But it looks like, from what I was looking.
So the answer to the question, let me jump in, I think, because I'm listening to both sides, is let's just take girls' field hockey, for example. If we were to end the day at three o'clock rather than 2:25, then your start time for that practice, if you wanted to modify proportionately, would go from three o'clock to 3:25. And then the coach, the impact, the tangible impact on the length of the practice is directly related to daylight. So if you start at 3:25, I don't know when sunset is, but that would impact the duration of the practice. So the comment I made before about having flexibility in that hour and a half to two-hour time slot, that's the timeframe you want to apply. So if it's 3:25, you can extrapolate where you're at from adding an hour and a half to two hours onto that.
But hold on, but why couldn't we, so even though it's our sport, why can't those kids leave early, especially in light of daylight? So if you want to still practice at three.
Because if somebody does play three-season sports, then.
So make it 3:15.
One issue, one issue that we may run into is the practices for shared sports require buses. And if they're leaving during the school day, then they wouldn't be there for the conclusion of the school day to do the normal busing runs. So we wouldn't per se have a bus to bring the East Hampton group over at 2:40, because that bus would be used up to do the normal dismissal run.
How is that different than it is now? I'm confused.
If you bump the dismissal time back to three, very often what happens is.
But right now, if our, if our kids are in shared sports, they get out when school ends.
Yep.
They're not on the same bus as the regular.
But what Sue was alluding to is if the, if the, our kids were released early for practice, so now we, we release them for contests where we send a special charter, but now we may not have a bus that's going to go and send a team to Port Jeff and the Southampton sports bus and the East Hampton sports practice shuttles that are going to leave during academic support.
He's saying there might be one bus that, I understand what you're saying. Right now we accommodate when the bell rings, one bus to take the children home and the other bus to zip over to East Hampton. What Eric's saying is now if you are leaving early for a contest.
No, excuse me. If you leave early for a practice.
For a practice, then you, you need three buses because you're sending one to send the children home, one to diverting one to East Hampton and take them to practice. And if it falls on the same day as a contest, you might have a third bus going to Ball Washington.
Wouldn't you have that now? You have that anyway.
You, you wouldn't have it now because the, the shared, the shared bus has got to, she combines the runs. Like Maude will take the bus run. Very often, like she sneaks 15 minutes in, but you can't sneak it in during academic support if that bus has got to be back to make a run.
So you're saying the shared sports buses also dropping kids off that would normally be dropped off after school?
Sometimes those buses are combined and they do have to get back for the elementary run.
Right. But that's, so that's what we're hearing, is that they combine those two. They're leaving early than they could. I did have a, this is a little bit of an observation, but, you know, I, I am really glad we're looking at the combined sports because we never want to deny children their passion of playing a specific sport and we have good relationships with our neighboring districts. I, I, I would hope that we can find a way to support that and still take into account the others, because when you look at the percentage of our students that do play fall sports, I mean, do play shared sports, when you take the boys, is it lacrosse out, in spring, 89% of our students don't play shared sports. In the fall, 94% of our students don't play shared sports. And in the winter, 96% of our students don't play shared sports. And I don't, and I'm not looking to eliminate this at all. I just want to make sure that as we know that the research shows that this is really healthy, that we don't make that such a stumbling block that we kind of sacrifice the health of the masses versus saying, we got to figure out how to, how to make sure these kids can get to their sports. But let's not ignore that the overwhelming majority of students who may not have this impact are just going to have to suck it up, if that makes sense.
Just one more observation, and I'm jumping on something that Susan said, and that would, and that is that currently what we do with our, our practices and shared sports practices is we don't dismiss students early for practice. We dismiss them early for contests. If we're talking about changing that, which I think is what Susan was alluding to, that would require the board's consent to do that. Now, I think what Susan was saying, I don't want to paraphrase what you're saying, but is if students are in good academic standing, then perhaps that's something that the board should entertain as a policy. I think that's worthy of future discussion, but that's a, that's an important thing to note.
I thought that's where Tommy John was, was going. But I, I would think that if the board voted to allow a child to leave academic support on a consistent basis to travel to a shared sport, we might hear from some parents that might not appreciate that. Right, wrong, indifferent, what?
Can I ask a question too? How does this impact the students that, that come to us for shared sports?
I was going to that next. I think that the other schools have to implement a drop-in lounge so they can hang out 15 minutes longer.
Starbucks franchise?
Yeah, because they're not coming here.
I'm serious, seriously.
So I can, when I was coaching volleyball, we shared that with Bridgehampton.
As we still do.
And the vast, like a lot of my team came from Bridgehampton. We were like a, a good split. It wasn't like just a couple of girls. We took a lot of girls from Bridgehampton. And they wouldn't get to us until after three. So even though our kids got out at 2:20 at that point, back then, they got out later than we did and we had to wait to start practice.
So.
So it'll help for the people that we're receiving, because it'll give them time to get to us.
But what I'm saying is, so we made the adjustment, adjustment for Bridgehampton.
Yes, we did.
So that would say, that's a question of what East Hampton and Southampton make the same adjustment that we do for Bridgehampton.
But is it because.
Was it critical mass?
The coach, the coach may be.
Right.
Well, it can't, I, I don't, I'd have to ask, Eric would have to answer.
I don't know.
I don't either. I don't have an answer. I'm just, listen, this is another one of those rocks we're interning, guys. It's a lot of rocks here.
Because then if, if one coach doesn't, and I know.
Well, no, it would have to be, it would have to be across the board.
Right. Because then you're going to have a, a parent, rightfully so, in a few minutes say.
I would agree.
But then my kid could join potentially a practice that started already, not worked out, unstretched, and potentially hurt themselves. So, I mean, this is like a bowl of spaghetti.
We didn't include it in the slide.
No, I know.
But Mr. Malone and I did talk to Mr. Bramoff about, and Mr. Malone's coached. But Mr. Malone and I did talk to Mr. Bramoff about, and Mr. Malone's coach, as have I, as has Mr. Bramoff, required time for warm-ups for, for a contest. And we said from the time that they step out of the bus, thirty minutes. Thirty minutes from the time they leave the bus until the start of the contest. So you have five or ten minutes to get the team oriented, and then twenty to twenty-five minutes of physical warm-up activity. And that's sort of what we operate on in terms of when we have buses leave currently.
And why sometimes they have to leave earlier than, than I do.
The other thing to consider, and it's not in a slide, is that right now, student-to-teacher contact time in Sag Harbor at Pearson is seven hours and one minute. That's long. So as it pertains, as that timeframe pertains to Susan's comment before, if you were to decrease that contact time, which would require a contractual alteration with the teachers, that might afford some flexibility. And the way that most schools get around that is that schools have the teachers on for seven hours, seven hours and one minute, but contact that's mandated with the students might be six hours and forty minutes.
Oh, interesting.
Or six hours and thirty minutes. And then they have a tenth period, which is optional, where students could leave. So that's the deal in Southampton High School, where my children go. Tenth period, unlike academic support, is optional.
So does that mean that, I'm sorry, does that mean that, so the student athletes, if they have a, a distance to travel to, to a contest, they're not considering that they're missing anything, they're just not dropping into that? And is that structured in a way, so much academic support, where a student can go in and get additional support if they need it?
It is. The history with it, though.
But it's just voluntary?
The history with it, just worth pointing out since we're having a discussion, is that prior to implementing academic support, we had that kind of situation where that tenth period was optional. And trying to get into a sixteen or seventeen-year-old's mind, ninety percent of the students leave the school when it's their option to do so. So the decision to implement academic support at that time was based on the fact that one of the things that was holding our students back from achieving at the level that we thought they could achieve that, was the fact that they were not doing their homework.
That was huge.
And implementing a mandatory academic support period, except for seniors, addressed that. And even this past year, when we were looking at trying to address the number of students who weren't graduating, we've seen a tick up in that. One of the prime areas or methods we used to address that was to take away their senior privilege, allowing them to lead during academic support, and in fact mandating it. Because again, the issue was they simply weren't doing it right.
So I've, I've been on both sides of that issue as a teacher, and I know that when the tenth period was not mandated, frequently the time that I spent with students in the classroom after school was a little bit more productive because I spent less time babysitting and managing behavior and this sort of thing and trying to keep track of thirty kids. I had the kids that wanted to be there, and the numbers would fluctuate depending on how close we were to the test, or, you know, these sorts of things. And then, but there was that piece that sometimes the athletes could only come to the first half of that, and then they'd have to run to practice or that sort of thing. So just from the opposite perspective of that, in that the, the change that you, that you mentioned is an interesting one, but we don't necessarily know that the kids performed better because they went to academic support. It could be that they, like a loss of privilege, were then motivated to raise their grades, that sort of thing. We don't necessarily have a causation that, that that was a.
We do have is some data, especially early on, looking at the percentage of students who are missing three or more assignments. So we tracked that during the implementation of the academic support program for probably the first four years. And even now, through, through the portal system, we can look at how many students are missing assignments.
And theoretically, could we mandate the tenth period for those that are on some sort of academic probation?
Well, we do that for seniors now. We could do it with everybody.
Oh, my gosh.
I actually had two different Pearson teachers say to me that they thought academic support would be more effective if there were fewer students in the class, addressing exactly what you just said. But, you know, I remember, Jeff, when you and I spoke literally about these issues three years ago, and I had mentioned the Wilton model, and you had talked about how important you felt academic support was. And I just want to say, I appreciate, I can tell that so much work went into this. So I just want to say an extra thank you to you and to Mr. Malone and to Eric Bramoff for all this work. But I also really appreciate everyone's creative thinking on this because I think this is what this issue needs, is creative thinking and open minds. And so personally, from everything that I've heard over the years working on this issue, I kind of like the model of trying to keep academic support, but letting kids leave early who need to make it to their contest. That's just me. I'm just speaking for myself, because to me, a few kids leaving academic support early, some of the time, in exchange for all of our students to get more sleep in the morning, which the research tells us is actually their most valuable sleep. That's when their brain is most active. It's the highest REM levels, apparently, in that early morning windows, for some reason. I don't know why. But that's apparently their healthiest sleep. That's when they heal. And this research is so clear in terms of what the outcome is, in terms of bringing down depression, anxiety, substance abuse, that for me, that is just a no-brainer in terms of a trade-off. So that's just my view on it. Thank you.
Before you kill me, can it just, is there a New York state law that says that, that school has to be seven hours and one minute?
No.
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 It's contractual.
No.
So is there a rule, how many hours, there is obviously a rule, how many credits you need to graduate high school, so.
There is contact hours you have to have, yes, in a day and in a week.
Do we know what, do we know what it is up top?
Yeah, it's, it's like four plus, but it's, it's nowhere near seven.
I can tell you that if you, if you just, to answer your question, if you go to the contact time and look at the neighboring schools, let's just take everybody from, I don't know, Shoreham, Waiting River, Alve. You'll find that Pearson, in terms of contact time, that's mandated is at the very high end. And the reason is that there was a decision made years ago that we would be better served, instead of having teachers do lunch duty and hall duty and those kinds of things, we would have them, we would be using them more efficiently and more intelligently if we had them working with students in their content areas. And that's what, that's the switch we made. We said to the teachers, basically, I don't know if Mr. can hear us here, he's in the back. We did away with those duties that most teachers have in a building, and we gave them academic support. And so students' contact time with teachers went from six hours and roughly thirty-five minutes, I believe, to seven hours and one minute.
I just, wait, I just got to, I have to interject, and I, I promised I'd leave this to the two principals, but any, taking away any time, you know, you can have students leaving to go to practices or go to athletic events, but I really strongly recommend, don't take away academic support, you know, for students because it is one piece in your bag of tricks that you have at your call, professional educators that can work with the most fragile. And also, you know, I just went to my daughter's honor society induction for international honor society, and every single one of the professors stood up and said, wow, you know who come to our, our academic hours? Is all our highest performing students. You want to get students in the practice before they head to college of going to ask for help. It is a wonderful practice that students learn, and they learn it. They don't, it doesn't come intuitively to go to a teacher and say, I need help. And where they learn that, before they go off to college, before they go off to technical school, is right here in Pearson. And that gives our students a tremendous edge, that they walk in being the most fragile student or being the most high-achieving student, student that's working from a ninety-nine to a hundred, or a student that is just trying to graduate. They learn to go to their professors, their teachers in academic support and say, I need help. And that is a wonderful skill before they go off to college. Okay, enough said.
Well, you know, the, thank you. I haven't heard anybody here so far suggest that academic support be.
Well, I think we, I think it did, it did get dialed up. That did get dialed up.
Let me finish, let me finish, please. I haven't heard anyone lobbying for that. What I'm hearing is potentially a shift to be more flexibility.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Which, you know, it's interesting because, and I'm not a big advocate for shrinking down our instructional day because I think we've had a case study here, when it was increased, academics did improve. And that academic support does help, is one of the many, to quote, "educating tricks in the bag" that can help support a student in increased achievement. The flip side is, research not only shows that they need more sleep, but it shows that you shouldn't be asking a teenager to do math at seven-thirty in the morning because literally that part of their brain is not functioning as well as it is thirty minutes to an hour later. And so as a parent of, of daughters who have had pre-calc and calc and at seven-thirty in the morning. And, you know, the research is very specific about math as an example. So you, you know, you kind of wonder, like, you don't want to lose that end piece, so are you shoving the day earlier because of that? But you're kind of defeating the purpose because you're setting kids up to not actually be able to perform at that time anyway. So I, I would advocate to keep, to keep academic support, but I do think that, again, when the research is kind of indisputable, that kids really aren't functioning well then and has all this negative impact, I hope that we continue to approach this from, we're going to do this, we have to figure out how we do it, not if we do it.
I think the longer our day was hard-won. So that's the only thing that I, I was trying to make the point of, is if we shortened a day, you know, gave up academic support for every child that I would be concerned with, so.
Can I?
You can, now you can, you can.
I, I was just going to, the reason I asked about, is there a law? Is because I can shorten the whole thing and get everybody to sports on time. If we go to English, math, science, language, social studies, eat lunch, have one elective, and have academic support. I'm at eight. I cut nine and ten.
There's no music? There's no?
One elective.
I've actually looked at trying to go from a nine-period day to an eight-period day.
Yeah.
With the notion that we would increase instructional time.
Right. Forget increasing instructional, kids have. I'm not talking about making the classes longer. I'm talking about kids that have study hall, photography.
Let him finish, let him finish.
Because I talk slow. So the, the answer to that is it's not doable.
Because, that's what I asked.
The holdup, the holdup, for the most part, centered around special education and students meeting the required credit allotment that they need to meet, but there were a couple of other instances as well. And it would take me probably an hour to walk you through the various scenarios. But going to an eight-period day is not really an option.
But I, I can give, because you're, you're, the mathematical formula is, if you have nine times nine periods, it gives you that many more options. So if you only have eight, that condenses the amount.
Especially IB and AP.
Right, so it'd be hard for you to get the, the classes you might need to get your IB to.
We got kids doing IB science at lunch now.
Because you have nine periods in a day.
I, I don't know this for a fact, that, that kids are wiggling in a study hall and two electives in their schedule in a ten-period day.
There are, there are certain kids who are doing that, and then there are other kids where they're, they're taking classes during their lunch period because we don't have enough periods during the day.
Science lab is lunch.
Correct, but then do they still carry two electives during the day?
Not always, no.
Okay.
And Sag Harbor is one of the few districts I, I have ever, and I, you know, worked with, with dozens of school districts, that actually has a full recess period for their high school, which is very unusual.
Right, and I wanted to just mention one more point. My goal, I think along with Mr. Malone's goal, was to present all the options tonight. I'm not necessarily weighing in as your educational, you know, I was going to use the word leader, but I'll say. To the merits of whether you do away with academic support or not, but I wanted to put all those options out there because that's our job. Those discussions come at a later time, I guess.
Do you have other data for us tonight?
No.
And Katie, that recess period's not, it's shared with lunch.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I know. But what most school districts do is they, they.
Have a lunch period.
They have a twenty-minute lunch period, and they split it and they, they break it up. And instead, our children have a whole period. So they actually have twenty minutes where they can eat and twenty minutes that they can have a recess. Very unusual. Some school districts only give them eighteen minutes to eat. Like, they just put them through like cattle.
They get through our lunch line sometimes and eat.
Exactly.
Wait till they get to work and have to eat at their desk.
Or you don't get, or you don't get to eat.
I haven't gone to lunch in thirty years.
Susan, can I, can I, can I ask a question now? So now we've heard the implications the last time on the bus issues on trying to move it from seven-thirty-five to eight. So now, I'm going to go one step further, because I don't know what presentations are next. Are we going to be able to see something where what we're going to need for buses to do this route with sports? We know what we, we, we haven't seen that yet, and it sounds like that's going to be a challenge. Go ahead.
Actually, we, we looked, we did it in our transportation overview.
Oh, good. I don't know that.
Yeah, the implication for, for moving the start time later, and we mapped that out. We're doing sports. Our next area is student, parent, community input. So the next piece for us is to administer a survey. That survey has to be craftfully created, because it's got to be a high-quality survey that's not biased in any way. And we have some entities that we're going to draw from in, in creating that. Probably run it by you guys before we administer it. But once we get that data, that will be another presentation.
Okay. I think when you did your transportation one, there was an option in between keeping it the way it is and going all the way to eight.
It's like another ten minutes.
It was this, like, another fifteen-minute shift. Yeah, kind of a split the difference kind of thing. And I would be interested in vetting that one a little bit as well.
As it relates to the, as it relates to, like, the slides that you saw tonight.
Correct.
Yeah.
If it was a, I think it was a seven-fifty?
I think it was.
Yeah, seven-fifty, yeah, something like that. Because I know that with the transportation, there were sweet spots.
She wants a eight.
No.
I, I understand that. But with the transportation, I know that there was some different configurations that made sense. And I know that for this one, we're kind of looking at, like, the furthest implications, but I'd just be curious.
Why can't I get on this?
But, and I think there was, I'd, I'd love at some point another conversation about the transportation options because I think there could be some different, more creative thinking there that maybe we can explore.
So maybe when we get closer to survey time, like, if, if the board can kind of whittle down to a couple of viable, you know, this is kind of what we're thinking as opposed to, like, this big broad octopus that we've been kind of looking at and saying, well, we've kind of narrowed it down to these that might be viable. There's pros and cons to these too.
And then include that.
Yeah, so that we can just get some more specific data from the community.
Great.
And then is there any, where in the process, or is there a step in the process where we are reaching out to other districts? And obviously, we know Long Island has the earliest start times in the country. So we are not surrounded by, by districts who've been committed to doing this and have experience. So we don't have neighbors to lean on to say, teach us, but there are many other parts of the country where they've done it, done it successfully. Are there things that we can just pressure-test along the process so we don't finish this, cross the finish line, saying, oh, well, it's not going to work? And then, you know, this summer we're reading, oh, my gosh, if we only talked about X, we'd only looked at X because it has been done elsewhere. So is there a way in which we can reflect on what other districts have done to see if there are things we're missing that might be innovative and successful?
I haven't gone on like a national search, because I think some of the considerations or the, the impacting factors are specific to our area. Much of the considerations are dependent upon what's already in existence around us, namely.
The distance to travel?
Sports, the distance to travel, transportation, those kinds of things. So I think some of the other investigations that you seem to be talking about probably have limited applicability. Not to say that you have, I mean, I've read some things, but.
And may, and may just add to the creative solutions that we.
The National Start School Later website has a set of case studies, which shows just a bunch of samples from across the country in terms of what they've done and how they've done it.
Are any of those case samples in districts, and this is simplistic, we'll just come back to this, in districts where you've had to have this distance travel for extracurriculars, so they've had to be, it's more complicated?
Well, I know there, there in, there are some that are in somewhat rural areas. So I would think that there are some that are comparable. And then there's some like Wilton where, you know, their longest distance to, is thirty minutes to a game. So it's just not comparable in terms of what we deal with. But they have a significantly shorter day. But that, that said, I also think it's important to note that we're just talking about moving to eight o'clock. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, their recommendation is no earlier than eight-thirty.
Which is why I was throwing a whole period out.
Yeah, but that's, you know, we're not even getting fully to where the recommendation is. And I think the other thing to keep.
is, and I think the other thing to keep in mind is that we know that Shelter Island and Ross, both schools that we play in different sports, you know, not all sports, but in different sports, also start at 8:00. So somehow, they're making it work, and we know that Southampton is gonna move, not this school year, but the following school year to 8:00, and their principal is very committed to this issue, and there are quite a few schools on Long Island that are looking at this issue. So, you know, it's not an easy one, we've been looking at it for a long time, but I think, given the evidence, it's worth, it's worth the time, and I really appreciate all the time you guys have spent on this.
So to sum up, what we're going to produce rather shortly, and we can send it to the superintendent, he can share it with you, is this presentation tonight, based on a 7:50 start time. In other words, just as another reference point for you, I don't think you're settling on that, by no means, but it's another data point.
But it's, it's an option, yes, you should send it.
So that's one of the first things.
Our goal is, our goal is 8:00, but, exactly, I do tell, but you know, but listen, you still have, you still have to get the data in front of you guys.
Is it a lot of work to do for this, then you probably want to take the will of the board, like we do with all of the requests like this?
I'm sorry?
Usually you take, you take, you ask for the will of the board if we're requesting additional work to be done, so I'm just wondering.
Oh, is anybody else interested in looking at the data for 7:50?
Yes.
I am.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a rock, it's a rock, it's gotta be, it's gotta be overturned, it has to be.
I think we have to look at all the data.
I agree, I agree. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate it. This time, I'd like to move on to personnel actions. We do have a couple of personnel actions, three of them.
Three of them.
We do have an addendum tonight. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 1, 2, and 3?
Some of them.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The other thing on our agenda is to talk about.
We want to thank Corinne Jones.
Welcome, thank you, appreciate it.
Welcome back, welcome back. How many years ago was it, Corinne? Okay.
Wow.
Something's never changed.
Thank you very much.
Meetings are a little quicker than they were.
Getting there. Yes, so thank you.
The other thing, we didn't get to this last time, under old business, we have a draft of when our board meetings would be scheduled for the next school calendar year.
It's still a draft.
It's still a draft. I'm just giving you the opportunity to discuss any observations, concerns, thoughts.
Do you want specific dates that are observations, concerns, or thoughts?
Yes, yes, yes.
July 26th, and I'm throwing it out there because it says board retreat, and I don't want anyone to say, where is she, but I can be here on the 24th, the 25th, and not the 26th.
Okay, thank you.
I think three days in a row, a lot to be together, anyway.
You love it, huh? Just saying.
Before I recall, the 20, the first two were goal-setting, some years we've needed one year, some years we've not moved away from that first night with any clear idea of goal, so we've needed the second night, that is separate from a board retreat, which we may or may not have, depending on who's on the board and what they decide.
Yep.
So that's why there's three days. So, since we don't know who's gonna be making that decision, because we have an election next week, do we want to say if the 26th won't work, is, do we do the 27th? Is that, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Yeah, wait, wait, Katie's, Katie's gonna be going on vacation with my whole family.
Katie, you mean you? Yep, 27.
So, I would recommend that we wait a week to see who will be on the board in July, and have Corinne survey those individuals to find a retreat date that works for everybody.
Okay. Nobody checked with me when I was.
Nobody checked with anybody.
You guys had settled it before I got on, and it was a done deal.
Yeah.
It's a kind of, yes, it's a kind of.
So we're having a retreat?
And the August dates, I think are.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Diana, the August meeting dates, I think are gonna be tough.
Okay.
I know I'm gonna be back on the 14th, and I don't even know.
Traditionally, the boards only met one time in August, so we did put in two dates because there was quite a bit of conversation about having more dates, but they have traditionally only met the one time.
Well, part of that is because in July, we only have, we have the organizational meeting, but then there's not another meeting in July to discuss and vote on business, so the past couple of summers, it's been an issue to only have one meeting in August, and then we probably have a special meeting to vote on stuff to get ready for school, so it's really, we've had to do it, we should just calendarize it.
Right, well, that's what, that's, because that's what's come up, so that's why we.
Yeah, I definitely, I appreciate that, but some input here between August and September, between the 28th and the 18th, we will have had three board meetings in four weeks.
Say again?
We will have had three board meetings on Monday nights in four weeks.
I'm sorry, where?
From August 28th to September 18th, we will have had three board meetings in four weeks. Now, I love you guys.
Why are they two back-to-back? Why would the 11th and 18th be back-to-back?
It's a lot of work to do.
Well, so, if you look at the calendar, we're either looking at the Monday right after.
It's more Labor Day.
No, the 25th, wouldn't we have it be?
Right, only because the board had kind of said previously that Mondays after long breaks were not ideal, but we can do it the 25th, if you guys want to do it.
But then you have it the 25th and the 2nd, so what's the difference?
I'm okay with having it, if you want to go back to that.
Well, remember, September is packed with a lot of stuff, I'm fine with the 11th and 18th.
Okay, that's true, there's a lot, there's a lot to do.
But I would like to ask, is it possible we could move the meeting on the 5th, the annual organization meeting, to the 10th of July?
We, we have, unless we.
Could we move that to July 10th?
You're supposed to do your reorganizational meeting unless you pass a board resolution that, that first week.
You have your new board members get sworn in.
In the new fiscal year, which starts July 1st.
Yeah.
Because that's a holiday week out here, and there's a lot of people.
We could, we could, if the 6th is more palatable, we can move it to the 6th, we just had to do it that week.
No, I'm flexible.
It was better than the 3rd.
I can do, I can do the 6th if that's better for the majority, I'm flexible. It's none of me.
All right, I'm, I'm hearing lots of conversations, but I'm not hearing any motions to move any dates at this point.
I make, I make a suggestion that it seems like more, that there needs to be more review of this, so is that the case, or are we making all the changes tonight, and then that's it?
I'm just getting feedback from the board, if everybody's okay with it, then, then we move forward with it.
I thought we were gonna wait a week, sit on this, digest, whatever.
Sure.
Think about, check our own schedules, lives, whatever.
So, I would suggest then that we come back with the, at the next meeting, with our list, so we can all do the list, and then vote, versus piecemeal, because if you piecemeal, then we're gonna have to change it.
If that's the case, why don't you send me feedback, dates, those sorts of things, and we'll come up with another draft if you've got specific things.
Sounds good.
Can we send them to our new district clerk and not you, so you don't have a headache and half-heart coordinate them?
That's a great idea, I second that.
We have a motion in a second.
All right.
Can I, can I mention something that is somewhat related, because I know we've just talked about the first week in July, there's kind of requirement to have a meeting. We do have a requirement before the end of the year, I just wanted to remind the board on, I believe the policy on videotaping requires an annual vote, and, so I would love to see that on the docket before it expires, so that we don't have any downtime. There was a year where I think we had to turn it off, and then vote and put it back on, because we did it too late. So, if we can do that sooner versus later, then we don't miss a beat.
Yeah, sounds good.
You know, we could even, I don't think there's anything prohibiting us doing it earlier than what's required.
Right.
I'd like to do it sooner versus later.
Makes sense.
So we don't miss a minute. Because it's limiting viewing.
Got it.
My thing's right.
Other old business, I had, did you hear back from the village on the?
No. No, sorry.
All right.
Working on it.
One of the things that I got today was just some feedback, some reflections from kids about distance learning, so if you want to read a couple of these and pass them down, it's just something that they wanted to share with the board.
Just little reflections on how they like their fraction.
Fraction interaction. One of the fifth grade teams did fraction interaction.
I love talking to the girl, I forgot her name.
There's a ton of them, it'd take you forever to read them all, I just thought they were cute, but you can read them as much as you like. Are there other things for old business?
Yes, tomorrow night, there is a Sag Harbor Village Board meeting, and I would like to, as the liaison, go to the village board meeting and invite them to a public session, or perhaps us to one of their meetings, if that's what.
I think you talked about some coming in.
It's cute.
Well, I think if we go.
I think at this point, I'll go there.
What time here?
If I may, if I'm gonna be going to a village board meeting, asking to meet with them in public, if they would like to meet in their public space, I think that would be reasonable.
Well, the, first of, did we, did they say no when we?
No, 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 I have not talked to.
Because I just heard someone say they said no, so.
No, I have not talked to the mayor herself, so she, our schedules do not jive, I've talked to everybody else in the office, but I haven't talked to the mayor.
So, as a, just so that we understand, because this is about, about parking around the schools, you have, several weeks ago, you told us you extended an invitation to the mayor's office for them to join a previous meeting, and it couldn't accommodate, and then we talked as a board about, at least our idea was to have a public workshop here, similar to other workshops we've had, and that we've had with the mayor's office and the village, please, about parking in previous years, so that we could have an open dialogue and forum, share ideas, and that the public could be here and participate in that conversation. Are they aware that that's what we're looking to do?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're just waiting to hear back on what?
I, I, we're still working on that meeting.
So what's the next step?
I think they're a little reluctant.
Well, the next step is me going to the village meeting, and in their public input, asking them to meet with us in public.
No, I understand that, but I, you know, you said that.
I haven't spoken directly to the mayor.
Okay.
I've just, I've just gotten feedback from, from other people.
My view of it's an agenda item at a village hall meeting, which, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but in the village meeting, it's a very different, it's not structured the same way as having a workshop, where you can hear, where it's much more of a back-and-forth dialogue than we had it last time, and we got great feedback from people who attended that they felt that they participated in the conversation.
But I also feel like we, I agree we should absolutely pursue that, because that was the will of the board, but I don't want the perfect to be an enemy of the good, in the sense that we're not gonna move forward unless we get this workshop. If we can find another avenue, I think that we should be open to that, and when we hear back from the mayor and see what she's open to.
And the message I put, I put forward to them is that the reason that you want them is that you, you only can speak as one, just like they can, they can only speak as one, so that that would be the reason that we would all come together, is that, and, you know, that not to be reluctant about that, is that you are, you only can speak as one when you're all together, and that one individual going down and speaking one at a time can't speak for the board, but Tommy John is our liaison, so.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, next step, Tommy John goes down to them, you know, invites them to come here, or feasibly invites us to go there, as long as we're getting the two groups together. I don't know, the, I mean, I agree with you, ideally, it would be that, but if, if they're not open to that.
We'll take our cookies there, we'll only bring cookies with us, and that will come there.
Any objection from the board on that pathway? All right, sounds good. Anything else for old business?
I just wanted to know what time the meeting is tomorrow? Tomorrow night?
I'm not sure, I think 6 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other old business?
Yes, first of all, I wanted to, I don't think we've had a board meeting since the musical. Isn't it the musical?
No.
No, and so, I just wanted to thank and recognize all the students who put on an incredible performance, it really was outstanding, and this was kind of ushered in a new, you know, a new group with new leadership, who was part of the old group, that, you know, kind of came in new leadership, and I was personally blown away by the breadth of talent, both on the screen, and up in the booths, and behind the scenes, it really was beautiful. And this week, we found out that many of our talented students have been nominated for Tini Awards, both in the musical and in the non-musical categories, and so, just a, I think we should give those kids a round of applause, so that's what I'm suggesting. And then, a couple of things on old business, I think it was either four or six weeks ago in a meeting, we, the will of the board was to request a recommendation from the administration, the cabinet, about some cases in the, or display cases in the facility, so that awards and other things from non-sports, we have a great sports case, but whether it's robotics or performing arts, and I didn't know if, if you had those recommendations for the board, and if not, could we get those sometime in the near future?
We'll have those for the board, we won't have them anytime, right now, we're working with three building projects right now, so that'll probably be over the summer that we'll have those recommendations for you.
Yeah, as an update, I did request double Tini Awards, if any of our children.
I know what you're saying, that's just awesome.
Okay, so this year, they're gonna.
I'm paying for them myself, I'm donating them, I know that's against the law, you'll tell me how to do that later.
I just want to add that there already is a robotic case, I saw it, it's right in the lobby, so unbeknownst to us, there, there already is one there, so.
I'm embarrassed, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, so was I.
And then, I think it came to the board's attention very recently, that their, the middle, the middle years IB program is going through an evaluation of whether we may move forward or not. I understand that in about a month, we're gonna get a presentation at a board meeting, but I thought we wouldn't want to wait a month to at least give a heads-up to the public.
Yeah, June 5th, I think it is, we're gonna be having an educational meeting on the, all the IB programs, and I think Mr. Nichols has been keeping the board updated, but because when we, when we started the IB middle years program, and what the IB middle years program is now, the joining in to the program, I think it has shifted, so if you would like an update, Mr. Nichols probably can do that right now.
You can do it.
Yeah.
So, when we first looked into the IB NYPD program, the lens that we were looking at the program, or justification for the move, is that we wanted to align the instruction at the middle level in such a way that it was a seamless transition into diploma studies in grades of 11 and 12, and the NYPD program runs from grades 6 through 10. As a result of that thinking, we sent probably 80% of our faculty at the middle level to NYPD training. What's changed in the last couple of years are probably three areas. One is that the NYPD program has introduced an assessment piece, which is quite costly, and as much as I think the program has taken merits, I am positive of the impact of that financial piece on the overall budget. And we'll be talking about that in a more detailed way. We did send some preliminary figures to the board, I think on April 19th.
Right.
The second factor that is worthy of consideration is that the NYPD program is more constraining schools and school systems than the DDP program. So, I've mentioned this before to the board, but it's much more process-oriented, and the extent to which they get involved in mandating that certain structures are in place and practices are followed, is much more heavy-handed, and it's become more so in the last year or two, especially when compared to the diploma program. And, and I guess the third area, which is related to that, is that there are limits that constraining factor places on our school in terms of what we can reasonably deal and can't. So, let me give you some concrete examples. The assessment piece is going to take away from instructional time, because it's quite cumbersome in terms of the extension of those assessments. So when people talk about losing instructional time due to state assessments, this magnifies that some way.
And the state assessments don't go away, this is just added to that, so now you have it, you have it.
No, they're in, they propose some things that are in the works to try to have some exchange in that area, but it's just very bad. In terms of some of the structures that we have to put in place in the school, like common meeting time, available staff during certain parts of the day, unit plan submission on a regular basis, which is a contractual issue. There are other constraints that are starting to, and I'll speak to Mr. Diana and Mr. Marius as well, are starting to have us weigh whether or not pluses outweigh the minuses or vice versa. So that's going to be embedded in our presentation on the day. Do you guys have anything to add?
I think there's a way that we can do a lot of the structures that they present, that we already have in place, and if we just do them a little bit more in-depth and thoughtfully, we can restructure it so we have the best of what NYPD gets, but it's best for our school.
So, when we do that presentation, I speak for myself, the more specific of those constraints, I think the more information the board can get on that, the better, so we can make a decision. Thank you. Yep. Appreciate that.
I think it might be important to show the shifts from when we started in the process of the adoption of the middle years program, and how they have shifted from what they, you know, now the things they're asking. Because I think this is, this is a community that's reluctant to have over-assessments, too. I think that's something that's going to chafe with our middle years, and that was, that was a shift, so.
And then, one last point, just remember that the purpose of this investigation was really to lead up to the diploma program, and to increase participation, both for students who elect or challenge the entire diploma program, which is our most rigorous offering, and for students who sit for at least one or more courses. And the enrollment trend for next year, the numbers right now is roughly fifty percent of the class is enrolled for the diploma program, which is more than one hundred percent higher than, about a hundred percent higher than in previous years, totally. So the trajectory right now for IB is very, very positive. I think that it's also important to bear in mind, and this will be touched upon on June 5th, that because we're a six through twelve school, there are many, many teachers, and I'll go over it very quickly. We have three high school teachers who at one time or another in the last year or two have taught middle school English. So they're trained IB teachers, who know exactly what the diploma program is looking for, and are teaching middle school. We've had four of our science department, four faculty members, who teach high school courses, in fact, and maybe it's five, who have at one time or another in the last several years taught a middle school course. Our history of the Americas teacher is also our seventh-grade social studies teacher. So the six through twelve nature of our school enables us to sort of build that continuity of destruction and the vertical alignment that everybody's always talking about, as long as we get everybody trained. So what Mr. Marius said before is, it's not absolutely necessary, perhaps, for us to adopt the program at a pretty extensive cost, to get the benefit.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Wow. Is that cost built into our budget, Jennifer?
Yes.
It is built.
Everything is built into the budget.
I don't think there's one, I'm, I'm going to be so, I've never, I think this community is waiting for that IB middle school program to roll out tomorrow.
I do, too.
And, and all of a sudden, if we're going right when we said we were going left, after years and years, if it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, it's gone, then we need to-
Yeah, I agree.
That's a bigger workshop issue than parking.
And that's why I brought it up, because the board just found this out, and so-
How'd you find it out? Never mind, don't tell me.
Because I emailed saying, does this mean, you know, I emailed the-
We got it up, it came in your Wednesday letter, prices.
But we, but prices, but we didn't hear that there was a question when we went forward or not. So I asked the question three days ago, and then I got an answer, well, maybe, and that's when I was like, I literally fell off my chair, which is why I raised it tonight, so that we're going to have a more in-depth conversation in a month, but for transparency, since we've been promoting this, it's a goal, we were gung-ho, and I, what you're saying makes sense to reevaluate, because the components of this, the ingredients to the recipe have changed. So I understand why we're reflecting on it, but it is a big deal, that's why we want to let people know, I want to make sure we raise it right away, so that no one felt like for five weeks, we buried it until after the budget vote.
You know, I'm glad it's brought up now, so the public will know, you know, to come to next meeting with public input, so we can get everyone's input. Absolutely, very important.
Would you want to add something?
No, it's just still, the administrators would never make a decision on their own, that they just, they just want to give you as much feedback as possible about it.
Right. Anything else for old business?
Yeah, it's ten after ten. I hope that we would reconsider our decision to, on public input. We have members of the community here tonight, and I think it would be nice if we let them come and address the board earlier than, than this hour.
Sorry, I have no luck.
I agree with you.
All right, public input due. Just to revisit, public input due is, can be for comments that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. Members of the public should address their comments to the board, and should be no longer than five minutes. Discussion regarding concerns about individual district personnel or students is prohibited. Those discussions should be directed to the appropriate administrator, and you are being videotaped.
Hi, I'm Kate Lawton. I don't have a child in the school system right now. Katie, thank you so much for the policy committee update. I didn't know about that committee, and your explaining it the way you did, saying that it was the law of the school district, was very helpful in my fuller and more, my fuller understanding of what it means to have a handbook, what it means to have some of the things that we have in place. That said, I would hope that one of the top things on your agenda for the committee moving forward would be the cell phone policy, would be the social media piece that's, you presented is right up there. But I also know that the wellness committee has worked so hard, and I wonder if it's packaged in the wellness piece as well. So I would just be hoping that you would be talking about that. But thank you very much. Also, I was curious, Erie is an audit thing, I know you can't talk to me.
It's a, there's BOCs, and every BOCs has a specialty, and so Erie One is out in Western New York, and their specialty is policy. That's what they do. So, for example, my former BOC's specialty was distance learning. And that's what they specialize in. So every BOC's kind of picks up on, the Cap region BOC's specialty is state aid, and that's what they specialize in. So that's what BOCs have kind of done across there. The Board of Cooperative Educational Services.
Thank you.
They've got all the acronyms in there.
I'm concerned about a couple of things, not the data around late start times, and why. That said, thank you for the presentation, Jeff and Matt. That was really great to see, as it related to sports. So as I saw it, thirty-four kids participate in fall sports, winter is twenty-one kids, and spring is fifty-five. These are the shared sports programs, if I'm right. I heard Ms. Tyce say that she wanted a percentage, and then you've got kind of very specific about percentages, and how it was a very small percentage of our students that are participating in shared sports. And I have to tell you, it makes me very nervous, because what I hear in that underlying is, oh, well, there's only a hundred and ten kids that are participating in these shared sports programs, and it makes me really nervous. So I just want to let you know that, you know, there are a lot of us out here that are paying very close attention to that, because we have students and children that are, that that's their lifeline. It's what they're really good at, and they love it.
Thank you.
Jim Kinnear, Teachers Association President. Just another moving part regarding the later start time, and perhaps it's ongoing, and I'm not aware of it, and you could tell me about it, but in the early part of the fall and the late part of the spring, teachers that drive here spend, you know, coming from Hampton Bay, is Quogue, East Quogue area, their drive time here is an hour fifteen minutes, sometimes longer. And my understanding is that if the day gets shifted, that the traffic would only increase, and that drive would only become longer. And I wonder if, taking into account teachers' commute drive, has been part of the discussion.
Thank you. I don't think we've had much conversation around that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think, I think surveying the teachers, of, you know, I only have anecdotal, you know, things. I live here, so, you know, I'm very fortunate, but teachers haven't been able to buy houses in Sag Harbor for a very long time. So any teachers that we hire are going to come from across the canal, are going to be commuting. And if that commute is an issue, it might affect getting the best candidates for a position. A friend of mine is the president of the Half Hollow Hills Teachers', and their district is undergoing a dramatic drop in enrollment. They're losing fifty percent of their students. And so they're accessing elementary school teachers every year. And he says, oh, I have a few teachers that live in like Sayville, Oakdale-type area. He says, that's a straight shot out there. I said, no, it'd take them two hours to get here from there. And he says, they're not going to take that. So I'm sure, Tom, you see, they're driving your way, you see the traffic in the morning. I know that the traffic can back up to West Hampton. And so it's just an issue to consider.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Cantrell. I'm sure you all know the last name. You received an email from my daughter. I'm not going to mention anybody's name.
Thank you.
All I'm going to ask of all of you, since everybody is here, I want my granddaughter to be able to go to her two after-school activities, which are tomorrow and Wednesday, without there being any problems. Please. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Helen Rousseau, and I just wanted to thank everybody for, you know, all the planning, and, you know, thank everybody for all the work they're doing towards, you know, starting school later. And, you know, I think that that is really important, and I would really love to see that happen, and many parents that I know would love to see that happen. And, you know, having said that, you know, sports are really important. And for me personally, growing up, I was really one of those sports people, and, you know, I would rather, like, I don't know, I could not, you know, be late, or, you know, miss a practice, or anything like that, it would, it would kill me. But what I'm, but what I, I rang a couple of schools earlier in the week, who start at eight o'clock, to see exactly how they do it. And what they told me was that they, because I agree with Katie Graves, we should never lose the academic support or any of the sports at all. And I know that, and I, what I heard, I don't understand what people were saying, because what I heard was that we all agree to those things. So anyway, what I heard from them was, and I think that the research should be orientated around sort of learning from others, you know, and I know that it's very unique here, but there are two schools that do start at eight o'clock, and we can learn a lot from them. And one of them was saying that for the kids who leave at two fifteen, because apparently that is the time that they would have to leave to get to like Port Jefferson, what they do, they missed, so they miss academic support. And I know what it's like to be involved in sports, you miss homework, you get home really late, like, I know they get back from the sports nine, ten o'clock at night sometimes. And so you miss out a lot. And what I think is really important, and I really hope that this is achieved, is to have some kind of, sort of, a group, an extra sort of academic support time for the kids that are involved in sports that are going to miss out, you know, because they might regularly miss out on it. And I know it's really hard if you're real, you know, if you're doing sports all the time, it's really hard to keep a balance. And, you know, kids aren't great at that, you know, keeping everything together. And what these schools do is they offer the academic support at a different time, and more sort of intensely, you know, sort of having a teacher's that, you know, I think somebody mentioned it earlier on, a teacher that specializes in a certain subject, you know, come and help with that subject, you know, like, just being able to have the flexibility to organize in the schedule, to have a group, you know, like academic support for certain groups. And also what they said is they have all the core subjects early in the day, and what they also do is they have all the sports activities as the last, you know, period of the day. So all the sports activities are towards the end of the day. So then if a kid has to leave early, well, they're missing sports, you know, it's like. And then, also, yeah, to make it mandatory that the kids do catch up with their academic support, or mandatory for their homework, but give them the support to get that homework paper in, or whatever it is they need to do. And I feel like, and I know this is just a small school, but, you know, I just feel like if there was like, you know, Susan was saying, a bit of creative thinking around that.
Just wondering if I just give your heads up?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thanks so much. So anyway, what they were saying is like have a drop-in clinic specifically for students who miss out, and, you know, some flexibility to teach small groups, you know, to teach small groups of students who are going to miss out. Thank you, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patty Burns, I'm a monitor at YARD, the after-school program, so I didn't know what was going to be said today, and I don't have anything prepared. But, you know, I mean, I see both sides of what everybody's thinking about, and, you know, absolutely the welfare of the kids is most important, but also the high schoolers, you know, they do, I mean, they do, they're the ones that I call the hit and runs. I mean, they absolutely do. They come in, they stop in, and they're like, see, you know, got to go. But there is a very nice sort of experience when you watch the, you know, the high school is interacting with the middle schoolers. And it's, I mean, it's a very nice thing, you know, to see over the years develop. But I think also, when you think of a program, like, to have that, you know, that aspect, you know, involved, and, and the casual nature of a drop-in really, I think, makes it so much more appealing. And that's, I mean, that's why I think the YARD program has been successful for all these years. But it, you know, I just think that's something that, you know, that definitely should be considered, and, you know, and, you know, as I said, I think the YARD program has, you know, met those needs. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Lori Marsden. I have two children at the school, Eve in eighth grade and Teddy in sixth. So first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for all the work that's been done. I've been, I was here a couple of years ago, talking about Start School Later, and I walk in, and there's, you know, our great principals up here, you know, giving their presentation, and so much more effort and work, and the creativity around this. I feel really confident that this is going to happen, and I'm excited, because, as we all know, and about the research that shows how healthy, healthier our children will be, once this is implemented. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, I'm a therapist, I have a private practice here, and I also have a web-based therapy program I produced, developed, and launched. So I know a little bit about mental health, and the mental health piece about what the research shows is what concerns me the most, and why I think it's so great that you're really advocating to try to find a way to do this. You know, we do have problems with depression in this school district, and substance abuse, and obviously suicidal ideation, and these are things that, you know, are exacerbated by the problems that students have by not getting their sleep. So being able to address that, you know, is really a great service to our children, and that's what we're here for. And just on a personal note, two years ago, I got up and I was talking about my daughter Eve and her seven thirty, five AM math class, which Chris said her daughters also had. So now, I'm looking at my, my son Teddy, who's in sixth grade, and he has been pretty good, except for the last few weeks. And it's such serendipity that I'm up here talking about this, and he has started really complaining to me. And he's tired all the time. And he just said, he said, Mom, Mom, I don't know, I'm just, maybe it's getting up so early, I'm just so, I'm so tired. He's been sick, he's had a cough for, like, over a week, he can't throw. And I'm just thinking, wow, here it is. And, and we know it only gets worse, because they only need more sleep, you know, the older that they get. So again, I applaud everybody for all the work they've done, and I look forward to this being implemented sometime soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Don O'Brien. I have a fifth grade boy and a third grade girl. Just a couple of things. Am I allowed to ask questions? That's okay? Okay. Are we seriously considering shortening academic support?
As you heard, we've got lots of options on the table, and we haven't made any decisions.
Okay, so having our school day go longer and having our athletes miss academic support and/or class time, unacceptable. That's not good for anybody. It's, and I heard someone say it's, it would be okay for our athletes to do that part of the time? That's not okay. All the kids need to be in academic support and going to all of our classes 100% of the time. Academics comes first, sports comes after school. We shouldn't leave school early because we started school later. Now, let's deal with our end time. Fifty-six schools in Suffolk County, 56. If we make this change, we're the last school to get out. The last school to get out. Now, I hear people say we should check what other states are doing. Why? Why? Long Island, the kids achieve and do great on Long Island and in Suffolk County. Why would we look at what other states are doing when what we're doing is working just fine? Now, you talked about Shelter Island. You can't compare us to Shelter Island. Shelter Island has one in-house varsity program that they don't farm kids out. So them getting out at three o'clock is not like us getting out at three o'clock. You mentioned one sport that would be okay for us to get out late combined, and that was boys lacrosse. You forgot to mention all of the other ones, and you forgot to mention what happens on game day. Now, Southampton is currently letting us practice from four to six with boys lacrosse. What happens on game day? It's a simple question. What happens on game day?
They leave early.
They leave early. Is that okay? Absolutely not. My kids aren't going to leave early. So then what are they going to do? Make a decision? I'm going to be on a shared sport? I'm not going to make it to Babylon on time, and I have to leave school early because we started school early? Okay, next. Rhode Island, the entire state has a website, Rhode Island Against Changing Times. And here's why they started this. You could look it up. Two schools in Rhode Island did the same exact thing. They started, they read some research. Now, we need, I think we need to deal with the word research for a second, because that's thrown around a lot, okay? There is research, and research against every possible thing that you've said tonight, okay? Because I have all the research that is completely opposite to what you said. And I'm going to read you one right now, okay? Here's what one of them says, all right? Delaying school times is unlikely to reduce sleep deprivation in teenagers. Research from the University of Surrey and Harvard Medical School has found. The research conducted a collaboration between mathematics and sleep scientists predicts that turning the lights down in the evening would have much more effect at tackling, at tackling sleep deprivation. Consisted with our findings, however, that no significant improvements were detected in continuously enrolled students. Thus, there is no compelling evidence to indicate that the change in start times results in a positive shift in standardized assessment scores. You have one research paper, which you keep going back to. I have one that I keep going back to. There's research saying that this is a good idea, and there's research that says this is a bad idea, okay? Your job on the Board of Education-
You've got one minute.
One minute.
Thank you. Your job on the Board of Education is to look at all of the research, not just one piece. And here's what I have to go back to, and unfortunately you weren't here last time, but I'm going to, I'm going to go back to it and say it, okay?
Don, I'm going to ask you, though, I feel like you're directing it.
Yeah, you've got to talk to all of us.
You've got to talk to all the board, because otherwise it feels a little, little too much, okay?
Well-
You can drag the comments to me.
Yeah, there you go.
I can look at you, but I'm going to be talking about her, though. Okay, so, "The Wilton School in Connecticut changed their start time."
That's all right, let him go.
"The Wilton School time, the Wilton School in Connecticut changed their start time in 2003. In the past 14 years, not one of the other 480 schools in Connecticut has followed Wilton and changed their start time. Wilton has not seen an improvement in grades and has not, and has reported problems for students who had to be pulled out of class early for away games. In addition, Wilton has seen zero change in attendance or tardiness."
Your time's up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Hi, my name is Rich Perrello. I have four children in the school district. Just a few things. I think that everyone here agrees that sports, being a part of a team, being involved in school sports, high school sports especially, is a unique experience that our kids have four years, some even maybe five years, if they're playing at a younger age, to be, to participate in something that they will never have this opportunity ever again. Unfortunately, at their age, they don't realize that. It's something that you learn when you're older, how much fun you had, or what you missed out on, or what you enjoyed at that age. So I think everyone would agree that it's a unique experience that is, I wouldn't say necessarily as important as academics, but I would put it right next to academics, and I think one goes hand in hand with the other. I think we can all agree on that. I also wanted to point out that I, I think that this board or the town, there is a lack of support for creating a competitive sports program in this town. There just seems to be a lack of commitment, whether it be from the parents, from teachers, coaches, students. It seems to me, I'm pretty involved in the lacrosse program and the FIDE program. I noticed that, this is in East Hampton, Montauk, Southampton, I think all of the east end, as the kids start to get older and they start to get more competitive, what you see is the kids that are actually really good at a sport and want to strive, they end up leaving. They go to boarding school, they go to a school up island, they drive to St. Anthony's, they used to be able to go to Mercy, but Mercy isn't very good anymore. So you're seeing that, that creating a sports, a competitive sports environment in this town, there's a ton of potential, but there just seems to be a disconnect when you go from the youth sports to the high school. And it's something that I, I see that now my daughter's in eighth grade, and I see her friends, they're, the kids that are actually really good, they're like, well, they're going to ship them away, because they don't have a lot of options here. And it's, it's kind of frustrating, because there is a ton of potential that you can have in this community. You don't have to have 1,000 kids in a high school to have a good sports program. A long time ago, I used to teach in a town in New Jersey, in Mountain Lakes, New Jersey, there was, I don't know, 400 kids in the high school. They were an unbelievable lacrosse program, because the community rallied around these competitive teams. So on my next point, I think we can all agree that moving the start times back and ending school at three o'clock, you can kind of argue the minute details of it, but I think we can all agree that it is going to complicate the sports program. It's going to be a disadvantage. I don't think you can argue that. And the more and more that I read about this research about start times and how kids going to school later is improving, the, I read just as much research that it's bad as it is good. And it just seems that it's more of it is less parenting. I really think it comes down to not start time, it's sleep time. And it's very simple. If your kid can't get up in the morning, put him to bed early. I mean, it really, it comes down to parenting your child. If your kid is staying up at 11 o'clock, 12, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock on Saturday and Sunday, it's going to take him three days to get back where he can actually function at 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning. And I don't, if it's really an issue, I don't think going from 7:30 to 8 o'clock is really going to make much of a difference. But moving those 30 minutes back and how it affects your sports program is, is very negative.
You have one minute left.
And in that case, the good that maybe you, you might have some good in starting late does not outweigh the bad, that it's affecting not only your sports teams, but what, someone came up before, what about the teachers? What about the coaches? I have people that work for me that drive from Smithtown. They hit that traffic at West Hampton. They're sitting in traffic. If you push the start times back to eight o'clock, that means they're probably, instead of sitting in traffic for an hour, it might move it to hour and 45 minutes. It's literally, the 30 minutes you move it back is probably another 45 to 60 minutes of drive time. And then how do you expect them to actually function, or how are we going to attract those teachers that, that you want, if you want to create these sports programs, or create this environment where you actually are going to have a competitive sports team? I just, I don't see the, I just don't think the research is that conclusive where it makes sense.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
I just want to say that I have three boys, two graduated Pearson, one pitched in the semifinals of the States, was there three times, and both became collegiate athletes with very good scholarships, both academically and athletically. And out of those three years, we've had nine students compete collegiately. So I just want to say that, and I think Stephanie's got her child close to us on a commitment. So we do, we do raise really good athletes out here.
Anybody else for public input, too?
My name's Jeff Esposito. I have four kids in the school district. Just wanted to give some suggestions, academic support. Could they come to school earlier and take the academic support before school and then get out of school one period earlier so they can make their sports on time? On another note, Yard, which I think is a great program, but I think a facelift to the place where it is would be wonderful, and let the kids design it and do what they want to do there.
Yep, I agree.
And a third suggestion is parking around the school. The road that cuts between the two schools, if you make it a one-way, you could create parking and have no through-traffic coming through. That way you could take the two schools and make it like a campus. So, just some suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Committing.
If we only, if we only ruled the streets.
Anybody else for public input, too?
All right.
Diane, can I just address some of the issues that were raised in terms of the research? I think it's a little bit of a mischaracterization to say that there's one study on one side and one study on the other. It's just not correct. Both the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Medical Association have looked at this, and there has been a body of research. In fact, it's been a growing body of research. There continue to be more studies that are coming out all the time showing the benefits. In terms of Wilton, I actually called Wilton, and there are schools, Greenwich is now moving their school start time, Ridgefield is about to move their school start time, so other schools in Connecticut have looked at Wilton's model. In terms of their academic performance, Wilton was already a very high-performing school, so that is not why they did it. They looked at it in terms of health and a number of other reasons similar that we are. And in fact, the school generated two studies on that question. They have no interest in moving back. The community after they shifted was wildly supportive after, by the way, a lot of reluctance from the community, particularly from the athletic sector. And after they shifted, came to believe that it was the right thing to do and the best thing for kids. And we have those studies, and I think I forwarded, did I forward those to you? I can, yeah, to be shared with the board, and we can certainly share those with the community. And I would encourage anybody who is researching this interest, issue and interested to look at the Start School Later website, because they have a ton of the research that's been done on there. But again, this isn't me saying this, this is the American Academy of Pediatrics, that's our nation's pediatricians, our kids' doctors, the American Medical Association, and I believe even the CDC, that are looking at the body of evidence and saying, this is overwhelming. So I think I'll listen to what they have to say. Thank you.
Thanks. One of the things that I was curious about, and so I just want to get the will of the board, I'm curious how many of our faculty and staff come from west of the canal? And I'm wondering if the rest of the board would be interested in that information as well?
I would, because-
Find that out?
In the PTA, no. PTSA meeting in this school, Mr. Malia was in attendance, and he expressed the same concern Mr. Kinnear did about commuting. So, yeah.
It's real. I go that way, and I see them backed up.
Yeah, and particularly this time of year, I mean, you know, come March, you know, March through the other September, whatever. Now, the good thing is a part of time, it's not, I would assume that when we do that, if we're not looking at changing the elementary school time, if we're not, then we wouldn't be including those numbers, because it wouldn't be impacted.
Thank you.
It would just be the middle high, not just, it would be the middle high school.
Yep, 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 yep.
All staff, not just faculty, but all staff.
Secretary, custodian.
Right, and maybe other employees that make that trip, and we should be in consideration of their impact as well.
Does anybody know anything about the train idea and how that went? Anybody have any?
I was on the board when that happened.
No, recently.
Yeah, that's still in, in process. And it's kind of an intermunicipal effort, being led by Bridget Fleming, our legislator, and Fred Thiel, our assemblyman. And they're looking to get more train shuttles from points west, Patchogue, out, out east, to try to get some of the workforce housing. I mean, the workforce labor out east. But as you know, you know, the last mile concept with the train, that's, that's a challenge for people. You know, when the workers get off at the train, they still need to get to the locations where they're working.
Right.
But that could absolutely be something that would help.
The other was the comment addressed about academic support in the morning. And I know that that idea was floated a few years ago. And actually, Wilton, they eliminated their academic support in the afternoon, but they made an academic support time in the morning optional, so if a student wants it. But I understand, Katie, you had mentioned something to the effect that when we have students particularly affected that they're able to get, you build in some support time either in lunch period or at another period in their schedule?
And we also do have contractually where some of the teachers could float, and we're, that's part of, so that there's some teachers that could actually float, I think it's up to, I think it's 12 teachers, but don't, maybe you shouldn't quote me on that, that we can shift their schedules, so they don't have, they could keep to seven hours, one minute, but they come in earlier. So if there were children that needed that early in the morning, that that's something that we could work with, and we've built that into some of our negotiations with the teachers as well, to see if we could expand that number.
This is something I've mentioned in a previous meeting, but most board members here currently have students who are playing a sport, who have graduated and played a sport. You know, I have three daughters, my youngest, who's in ninth grade, plays two varsity sports and one JV slash varsity sport. So know that, like, you know, you may hear me advocating for a start time, that in no way diminishes my personal commitment, or the importance that I think, and I was a varsity athlete myself, believe it or not, wouldn't look at, know by looking at me right now, but, but that no way diminishes our, my commitment, and I think the board's commitment on the importance of sports. So I'm hoping they're not mutually exclusive. I think both help children be more healthy, and so I come from it of assuming we're going to do both, and then how do we figure out how to make it happen versus one needs to be the sacrificial lamb for the other. So that is my approach. And I did not mean to give the impression that I don't care about shared sports at all. I would be curious, I don't know if we can add all the numbers up, but certainly what their experience is important. I'm not advocating to not have shared sports. I've served on the athletic committee and spend another night away from my family, because I think athletics is very important.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else?
My New Year's resolution was to be in bed by 10.
Can I get an option to adjourn?
Exactly.
All those in favor?